Good evening, everyone. I'm gonna call to order the meeting of the Capitola City Council. And we will, one, I want to welcome everyone here who is in the chambers. And also want to welcome everybody who is watching from home. And so we'll begin with a roll call.
Councilor Norton.
Here.
Councilor Vator.
Here.
Councilor Termini.
Here.
Mayor Story.
Here.
And I did want to let everybody know that Councilmember Harlan is not feeling well this evening, and so she will not be joining us. So next we'll have the Pledge Allegiance led by Councilmember Termini.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Yes. Mr. Mayor, I'd just like to let you know that it's just pure accident that Michael Termini and I are wearing the same shirt tonight. We are not bookends.
We just have the same closet, sort of.
Well, you look like Bob Zee Twins.
Yes, we read the memos. Where's your shirt?
And so next, let's move on to presentations this evening. And the first one are, we have certificates of commendation to Detective Sarah Ryan, Detective Leo Moreno, and Sergeant Mark Gonzalez. And I'd like to welcome Chief Escalante to give the presentations.
Good evening, Mayor, Councilmembers. This is my honor, one of the things that I love to do. And we have a lot of good cases and a lot of opportunities to recognize folks for all the great work that they do. This case here, unfortunately, was that of a homicide that occurred in November 9th of 2013, where a businessman lost his life in the city of Capitola. And for those who don't know, when these cases happen, they're very difficult to work through. It involves 24-hour shifts. It involves interviewing victims, witnesses. It involves working with family members. And in this particular case, there was a lot of information that was out there, and we had no suspect information from the very start. And so the detectives and Sergeant Gonzalez had to really work to develop information. Time is of the essence. You have to locate witnesses and try and preserve the scene as best you can. And in the city of Capitola, it is a smaller agency, and so we're not afforded all the resources that a larger agency might have. And so in this instance, the two detectives, Sarah Ryan and Leo Moreno, with the assistance of Sergeant Gonzalez, literally worked around the clock, not just one day, but a couple of days, but they did take some breaks. And worked with every agency in the county except for one. They also worked with state agencies that came from out of the area. And they also work in hand and end with our District Attorney's Office, and they are here as well to assist in recognizing them for their hard work. And in a short period of time, they were able to develop enough leads and evidence to actually arrest two suspects involved in this case. And for those who don't know, cases like this actually go on for a long period of time after that. And it is a real big, detailed case. And so for them to be able to put all that together and still maintain a caseload, and for Sergeant Gonzalez, who is not assigned in the Investigation Section, he actually got pulled back from patrol to help assist in this, and then also had to manage his patrol shift, I think is just really remarkable, the work that they did. And so I wanted to recognize them today in front of the council and their peers, and thank them for a great job and for the safety that they helped provide our community. Leo and Sarah and Sergeant Mark Gonzalez? Any words of wisdom?
Just want to say thank you, Council. Thank you, Chief. Thanks, Cecilia Rowland. She's here. If you want to stand up, I'd like to share this with you, Cecilia. She was part of our team, and she helped us a lot. In addition to that, where's Dan Filpo at? Is he here? He snuck out, because he probably knew I was gonna do this. Lieutenant Filpo from the Santa Cruz Police Department was here as also, and he's commanding the tactical team that actually caught the suspects for us. We were very thankful for that. Thank you very much.
Thank you, guys. Really appreciate it. Our next presentation is, we'd like to honor our retirees, and one of them just happened to be a K-9. And one of our local K-9s, Katie, who gave us a little over five years of service to the police department, apprehended numerous suspects, assisted numerous agencies, not only in Santa Cruz County, but outside Santa Cruz County, tracking suspects, drug recognition, locating suspected narcotics, assisting in locating missing people. Katie did a lot of work for the police department, and for those who attend National Light Out up at J Street Park, she provided numerous demonstrations for us and did tremendous work. And Katie retired recently in December after five years of service, and her partner, where's there? She did the work. Leo just drove. Or, I'm sorry, Pedro just drove.
I just drove around.
That's right. But anyway, the handler, you know, does so much work, and the training that goes into this, and the care, and the feeding, and the nurturing of the program. And it's a lot of work that goes into it. It takes a ton of commitment, and there's a lot of pride that goes into being a K-9 handler, and people don't really realize that. And so Pedro, I really want to thank you for all the work that you've put into the K-9 program, and for all the work that Katie has done over the years. I hope she enjoys retirement.
She is.
So I want to present this to you as a little token of our appreciation for her services.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Well, thank you, Chief, for those presentations, and I want to extend a thank you to the officers who were involved in that homicide, and quickly apprehending the suspects, and for all the officers who are here and not here, including Katie, who serve our community, keep us safe, and of, you know, put yourself in harm's way for the benefit, for the health and safety of the residents of Capitola. So thank you very much, and it's an honor for me to be, serve as your mayor, and I think for these councilmembers as well, to, you know, be able to serve you. So thanks again. And now, and Chief Escalante, thank you for that presentation and bringing that recognition to us this evening. And so next, we'll move on to the next item on our agenda, which is a presentation by Michelle Williams of the Arts Council of Santa Cruz County. She is the executive director. Good evening, Michelle.
Good evening, Mayor. Good evening, councilmembers. You know, there's a saying in the arts, "To never perform with animals or children if you want any attention at all." So I'm gonna try to be half as entertaining and wonderful as the story of Katie, so delighted to be here for part of that. So yes, I am Michelle Williams. I'm the Director of Arts Council, Santa Cruz County. Do I do this right here? And I'm gonna speak to you very briefly about the impact of the Arts Council in our programs, and then about the economic impact of the arts in Santa Cruz County. So a little bit briefly about the Arts Council. This is our mission. I'll give you a moment to read it. And in our mission, it contains the strategies we use to do all of our work, which is promote, connect, and invest. So in 1979, Capitola was one of our jurisdictional partners that came together to create the Arts Council, and 35 years later, because of your 35 years of support, we are still going strong. Since 1979, which is when we were created and when our grants program was launched, we have given over $5 million out that supports events that are seen and enjoyed by over 500,000 people every year. In 1980, we launched Spectra, our award-winning arts education program, and since then, we've been inspired, engaged over half a million schoolchildren through music, dance, theater, visual, literary, media arts, you name it. And in 1986, we started producing the Open Studios Art Tour, and since then, thousands of artists have maintained and built careers through it, and hundreds of thousands of people have been connected to friends, neighbors, and strangers through this community-building program. And then in 2011, we acquired Mariposa's Art, which is an after-school arts program with a powerful youth development component. We serve over 2,000 youth each year through that, teaching them not just art forms, but also key leadership skills. And between Mariposa's Art and Spectra, we serve over 10,000 children every year. And we see this is the year as defining our next 35 years. So there are a lot of sayings about this county. I've heard "Keep it weird," "Take it back," "Keep it safe," and we say "Keep it artful." A couple of facts. We are the second smallest county in California by region, but we have the fourth-largest Arts Council, and we have the fifth-highest population of artists per capita in the country. The arts, including creativity and innovation, are part of what I believe make this county such a fantastic and special place to live, and it's because we've been intentional about fostering and supporting that creativity for many decades. When the Capitola City Council helped create the Arts Council 35 years ago, we were the big thing that was gonna help the arts moving forward, and 35 years later, we're carrying on that tradition, and the Arts Council is now supporting some of the next big things in our community. For instance, we are providing leadership on a local, regional, national level. My colleagues and I have served on panels for the National Endowment for the Arts, for the California Arts Council. Our Open Studios Grants and Arts Education Alliances are all being used currently as models throughout the country. You also have likely heard about the resurgence of what is now Santa Cruz Shakespeare, formerly Shakespeare-Santa Cruz and Shakespeare Play On. We have been the fiscal sponsor for that effort and helped them raise $1.28 million in just under two months, and they have a season running in the glen this summer. So we were instrumental in that, helped them play on this summer. That was very exciting. We also believe very strongly in building the capacity of artists and organizations throughout the county. We're about to launch a new grants program called the Elevate Program, and in that program, we're gonna work with a small cohort of smaller organizations, arts organizations, and give a three-year commitment with the idea of creating the next Cabrillo Music Festival, the next Coombia Jazz Center. So that's a very exciting program, and we also provide hours of one-on-one support to artists and arts organizations. And finally, this is something that lights my fire the most. This is actually a picture last year of a supervisor friend and a child from the student art exhibit. I don't know if you've been to the county government building in the last week, but we've just put up our art show there, and it is spectacular. We got 760 pieces of art to put up in that center, and I have a couple flyers here for you that, may I just pass these? And that's gonna be up for the next month, and it is, if you ever want to experience what it's like to not be artful and be artful, go to the county government center when there's no art up, and then go up when this show goes, because it's just, it's extraordinary. But this idea of us working with partners you might not expect us to is something that we're really focusing on. We recently partnered with about 20 different organizations to put on a forum about the Affordable Healthcare Act, to help both artists and community members get health insurance. We also recently submitted a grant in partnership with the San Lorenzo River Alliance to use the arts to activate and make more safe the San Lorenzo River, and we are a sponsor of the Open Streets Program coming up here in Capitola next month. And the idea is here that we are helping to address broad community issues using the arts as an effective tool to create dialogue and community change. We all know that the arts do incredible things for our hearts and our minds and our souls and our community, but the arts actually do so much more. And I think this beautifully sums it up. You've just heard about how the Arts Council and the arts are changing lives, and I'm gonna invite you for the next couple of minutes to think about the arts a little bit differently. So, if I may, a couple weeks ago was my husband's birthday, and I took him out on a date night, and we decided we were gonna go to an arts event, naturally. And so we looked at brochures, we looked at some websites, we bought theater tickets online. I bought a new dress, which is a banner moment for me. We got a babysitter, and we parked at a downtown garage. We ate dinner out, we went to a show, had dessert after the show, and had this incredible night. But in that one night, think about all the industries that we touched. Web designers for the websites, graphic designers for the brochures, e-commerce for the tickets, retail for my dress, babysitters, which is truly the racket in all of this, revenue for the city for parking at the restaurant, think about the waiters, the restaurant owners, the farmers who sell to that restaurant. And then at the theater, plumbers, electricians, actors, set designers, directors. We all love the arts, and we think of them as a wonderful amenity, but they are businesses, and they are spending money and creating a product that drive our economy. So to put this into real numbers, we conducted, in partnership with Americans for the Arts, an arts and economic prosperity study, and this is what we found out. This study was done in all 50 states, including Santa Cruz County. We surveyed arts and culture organizations throughout the county, over 70 of them, and we also surveyed the audiences. And what we found out is, annually, artists and arts organizations and their audiences spend $38.4 million every year.
In this county?
In this county. And I'll point out, this is just the arts nonprofit sector. It does not include individual artists. It does not include movies, or architects, or any of the creative industries, just the arts nonprofit sector. This number's broken up into two figures, $21.8 million by the organizations themselves spending every year, and that leverages an additional $16.5 million by arts audiences. Now, we worked with a team of economists from Georgia Tech, and this was modeled specifically for Santa Cruz County, and I'll speak a little bit more about in a minute, but you can feel very confident in these numbers. The arts also support jobs, actively support jobs, at the organizations themselves, the people that they hire. So $38.5 million, 877 jobs, right here in this county. We always say the arts provide food for the soul, but they're also providing food for the table for 877 households in this community. And also generating government revenue. And this number breaks out into two, $1.4 million for local revenue, and $3.8 million for state revenue. Now, every time a dollar changes hands at the grocery store or gas station, there's an economic impact, but very few industries generate the kind of event-related spending that the arts do. Again, thinking about my date night with my husband, and then think about the last time you took your significant other to a similar event, and all the industries that you touched. So this is what a typical attendee spent per person beyond the cost of admission, and it breaks out some of the areas where they did the spending. But we also asked all these folks for their zip code as well. Now, this data is based on 567,000 attendees at 72 organizations, and what we found is that a full quarter of our arts audiences are non-local, 26%, with 74% being local. So for a typical non-local, they spent $64.48 per person, and the locals spend about $16.56 per person. So you could see why cultural tourism is such a major driver. A couple, very important things. 74% of non-local attendees, their primary reason for their trip was the arts event. So they came here for the arts event, they went out to dinner, they spent their money, and then they went home. You like that? So you can start to see the pull of the arts. Another very key thing, over 40% of our resident arts attendees said that if the event had happened somewhere else in a different community, they would have traveled out of the community to go to it. So this says that when we invest in the arts, we invest in a product, and it's a product that draws people into our community and keeps our neighbors here as well. Just says, a vibrant art community is great for local business. And one last figure that I'll point out, which is that arts audiences are not just spending money, they are giving their time to a valuation of $2.1 million each year. This is not factored into the study. It's just an important statistic to know that these are people building community for us. So I believe you were provided with copies of the report, and if you look on the backside of the report, you'll see that a lot of your national partners were partners on this study. The Conference of Mayors, League of Cities, of Counties, the U.S. Chamber of Conference, and the Conference Board, these organizations are partners because they believe that the arts are a cornerstone of our economy, and they have bought into the results, and so I hope you will feel confident into doing so as well. The story to me is, when we invest in the arts, we aren't investing in a frill, we're not just investing in our youth, and nor are we investing at the expense of economic development. Rather, we are creating, we are creating jobs, and we're creating a major economic driver. And in the end, just means that the arts mean business. Any questions?
Michelle, would you give a little plug right now for Open Studios?
Sure. For Open Studios?
Yes.
Absolutely. Well, we are accepting applications right now. I believe the deadline is, gosh, is it the end of this month? I've got a lot of deadlines in my head right now, but I believe it's the end of this month, and we would love to have even more Capitola artists participate. We always have several, but we'd love to boost that up. So yes, that's coming along, and it's gonna be another incredible year.
Thank you.
Sure.
You have other questions? Well, thank you, Michelle, for that very compelling and artful presentation.
Absolutely.
And thank you for the work that you do and all your staff.
Absolutely.
For, you know, bringing art to our community.
Sure. Let me leave you with one last thought, if I may.
Yes.
The city of Capitola, the funding that you give the Arts Council, we funnel that into our grants program. We give about $185,000 in grants every year, and we believe that is the seed money for this $38.4 million. And in the end, what that means is that when you invest in the Arts Council, you're investing in your community, and we're really grateful, and I'm grateful for the time tonight.
Great. Thank you. So next, we'll move on to a report on closed session.
Thank you, Mayor Story. We had a very short closed session this evening. It was scheduled for 15 minutes, and we didn't even need the entire 15 minutes. We had one liability claim to discuss, and that was the liability claim of Patricia Greenwood. We had a brief discussion among councilmembers concerning that claim, but the council took no reportable action in closed session. And that's the end of my oral report.
Right. Thank you, John. The next item is additional materials. I believe we did have some additional materials presented to us here at the dais, and one was a preliminary cost estimate from Reggler Park. That is on the agenda for discussion later. And I believe there were some additional materials concerning this, actually, the presentation by Ms. Williams. Next, we have additions and deletions to the agenda. Are there any requested additions or deletions to the agenda? Seeing none, we'll move on to public comments. This is an opportunity for members of the public to address the council on items not on tonight's agenda. And good evening.
Hi. Good evening. I'm Deborah Bone. I'm the Director of the Cabrillo College Stroke and Disability Learning Center, and I'm here because I want to thank you for your longtime support of our program. I'm also a member of the Human Care Alliance. I think most of you probably know that, and I just wanted to bring you a little bit of an update about our program and invite you to our Honors Day celebration coming on May 22nd. As most of you know, our program is an educational rehabilitation program. We serve adults who have become disabled, primarily after a stroke or some other medical condition like a Parkinson's diagnosis, multiple sclerosis, a brain injury, a brain tumor. We are part of the Disabled Students Programs and Services at Cabrillo College, and we serve about 150 students each semester. All of the participants enroll in the college as students, and they participate in small classes, small group activities, primarily in mobility and fitness, communication and speech, because often stroke leaves people without the use of language, and then counseling and support to really adapt and learn how to become disabled after probably not thinking about it very much prior to the event that probably leads into needing our services. We are planning a four-week summer session. We're closing for the end of the semester, and then we'll be open mostly in June, and then we come back at the end of August for the fall. We sort of follow the academic calendar. We're very excited because we continue to add new activities. We have a variety of supportive activities, including our choir. We have a ceramics program. We have expressive arts. We have some creative movement. We really want a comprehensive program to help adults who've become disabled to learn skills, maintain their independence, and enjoy a community of support. And really, it's that community of support that we count on to help people really find a new way of being after such an event. And you have all participated, I think actually longer than I have, at the Stroke Center. And part of why I came to talk to you is to say goodbye in this role, because I'm planning to retire at the end of this year, and I wanted to come personally to thank you for the support and for the relationships that I've had with some of you over the eight years that I've been in this role with the Stroke Center. Eight years before that, as a nursing instructor. 20 years before that, as a nurse in the community. And looking forward to changing a little bit my pace of life. I have a wonderful person coming after me, Cynthia Fitzgerald. She comes to us with a background in psychology, gerontology. She's worked in education. I know that you will get to meet her, and I hope you will welcome her onboard. She will be a great addition to our program. And as we, as I pass the torch off to her, we're also entering our 40th year. The program was started in 1974, so at some point during the next year, we'll be celebrating those 40 years. The program began as a small support group in Green Acres Elementary School, moved in '76 up to De La Vega Park. Some of you may have seen our center up there. And then in 2010, to the Aptos Campus at Cabrillo. So again, our Honors Day is May 22nd. I've got my card, in case any of you would like information further. And I hope some of you will make it up there. We'll be in the Horticulture Center from 10 to 12 on that Thursday morning. We honor the two-year and four-year, you could say graduates, people who've completed two and four years in the program, and all of their accomplishments, and we celebrate the program. We'd love to have you join us, and we look forward to partnering with you for another 40 years. So thank you.
Thank you, Deborah. Thanks for coming this evening and reporting to us on this Cabrillo Stroke Center, and congratulations on your retirement.
I'm sure I'll see you all again.
Yes.
I'll be down here for some of that art and wine stuff.
Okay. All right. Good to see you. Good night.
Good evening. I'm Margaret Kinsler. I am here tonight as a representative of the Capitola Village Residents Association. And while I'm here, I might as well update you on a few things that have been going on in our association. We recently had elections for officers. So now our president is Janet Russell. Our vice president is Nels Westman. Our secretary is Judith Feynman, and our newsletter editor and webmaster is Rich Dida. And Rich is also writing or responsible for getting, anyway, an article into the Capitola SoCal Times every month. So look for the CVRA article in the Capitola SoCal Times at the beginning of each month. It has something to do with Capitola. And finally, Linda Hansen is our membership coordinator. And CVRA recently participated in getting out the word about the Espinade Day, the Open Streets in Capitola Day. We were asked to send an email to all of our membership and give them a heads-up about that upcoming event. And we plan on being there with a table and signing up some new members. So see you there. Thank you.
Right. Thank you, Margaret. See anyone else that would like to address the council on items not on tonight's agenda? Seeing none, I'm gonna close the microphone for this portion of the agenda, and we'll move on to city council, city treasurer, and staff comments. Let's start with staff comments.
Councilmembers, I have a brief announcement that this week, the Coastal Commission approved our LCP amendment to add the Lower Pacific Cove to the parking meter zone. So that's good news. So as soon as the parking lot is complete and open, we're all set to integrate it into our parking meter program.
Thank you, Jamie. That's good news. Any other staff comments? And noting that the treasurer is not here, I'll bring it back to the council. Council comments. Yes, Dennis.
I'd like to just announce, and Margaret started me off, is on May 4th, we'll be holding our first Open Streets Program in cooperation with the city and Ecology Action, where Espinade will be closed down from 11 to 4 for community use. And so it's a day that everyone in our community, anyone's visiting us, can come down and enjoy that, what it's really like to go to the village and not have to negotiate cars. And so that's gonna go from 11 to 4 on the 4th of May. There'll be a series of small events down there. There'll be music down there. There'll be a raffle. And it'll just be a fun day. Also, the Chamber of Commerce is also holding a kite-flying contest that day, if anybody wants to enter that. And... to enter that, and come down and join us on May 4th, it'll be a fun day, thank you.
Thank you, yes, Mike.
I want to thank everyone in Capitola who came down and made the Wounded Warriors Operation Surf Program, just a phenomenal success at our beach this last weekend, the whole town turned out, they had an amazing time, and it was their first time they had come to Capitola and had their surfing event, it was moving on all sides and in all aspects, so thank you all.
Yeah, thank you, Ed?
Yeah.
Okay, I wanted to let everyone know, and also the council, that I'd been invited to attend the Santa Cruz World Surfing Reserve Summit, which is going to be held on Friday, April 25th, and there are a group of surfing organizations that are coming in to discuss about ways that we can protect and preserve our surfing habitat here in Santa Cruz, and so I don't know if the council has any particular thoughts about that, I'd be welcome to hear them before I...
It's really good, because it's a worldwide organization, unfortunately, Capitola was not included in it, because they included all of Pleasure Point down to Shark's Cove, and then they cut it off right there, they really, if they were including Pleasure Point as a surf break, they should have included Capitola, so maybe our mayor could move towards including Capitola in that reserve.
Okay, thanks for letting me know, Dennis, I will certainly bring that up, and since they invited me there, I think they should certainly include us in, as part of the Surfing Reserve. So, any other comments, seeing none, I'm going to move us on then to the, on the agenda. The next item is Board Commissions and Committee Appointments, I don't believe we have any this evening, so we will go on to the Consent Calendar, these items will be voted on when one motion, unless an item is pulled, does any member of the public wish to pull one of the consent agenda items? Seeing none, council members?
I'll move the consent agenda.
I'd like to pull Item Number C, just for a quick question.
I'll second that motion.
Okay, there's a motion to approve the consent, and seconded, but maybe before we take that vote, we could get Dennis's question answered.
Okay, is Lisa here? Lisa?
Hi.
There's $15,000 for paying the junior guards to go through the course?
That's correct.
What's the hourly wage for that?
So they get paid about $13 an hour, we're talking about up to 24 instructors for 40 hours, and I round it up.
Okay, is this going to be an ongoing cost for the city to do this?
No, it'll decrease over time, because you have to go through the 40 hours of training initially, and after that, you only have to go through 16 hours, so if we can get all 24 right at the beginning, and then over time, maybe it'll be five or six, you know, through attrition, new guys come in, you go out, so no, it'll significantly decrease.
Thank you, Lisa, you answer my question, $13 an hour is very fair.
Okay, thank you, I'll call the question on the motion, all in favor?
Aye.
The motion passes unanimously, which will bring us to the General Government Public Hearing portion of our agenda this evening, and the first item is to consider the approval of plans, specifications, and the engineer's estimate for this construction of the McGregor Park, authorized to advertise for bids, and a budget amendment allocating $130,000 within the capital improvement program, from undetermined parking improvements to the McGregor Park project, that's a mouthful, but we're talking about developing the pump track, the skateboard park, and the dog park on the McGregor property, what we're being asked to do is approve the plans and specifications and the engineering estimate tonight, approve the budget allocation of $130,000, and approve modifications to the McGregor Park Donation and Sponsorship Program. So, Steve, you going to lead us in the Staff Report?
I am, good evening, Mayor and Council. Tonight, we're taking hopefully the final step to begin the McGregor Park Project, this project, the plans have been completed based on the conceptual approval by the City Council, just to refresh everybody's memory, the park includes an area for the development of a 12,500-square-foot dog park, a 9,500-foot pump track, a 10,300-square-foot skate park, and I'd just like to say at this point that those, we are developing the areas for those parks, the actual elements and improvement of those are part of the fundraising and sponsorship program. The project will include a 30-space parking lot, a seating area, and a kids' play area, and there's landscaping and irrigation also included. Here's a site plan from the construction drawings, really quickly, we have McGregor Drive across the top here, Highway 1 would be above that, we have the parking lot to the east of the property here, we have an area here that's designated for the skate park, this is the area designated for the dog park, and to the west, we have the area designated for the pump track, it does include a small seating area, and garbage cans that we put here, and a drinking fountain in the middle, and a small kids' play area also. Like I said, the improvements within each area is part of the fundraising program, right now, the plans do include paving approximately half of the skate park to give a small skate area, or actually, a modification to this plan is we are actually flip-flopping, paving the eastern end now, and leaving the western end unpaved, just to flip-flop within the skate park with these plans. So tonight, we want to talk to you about the fundraising and sponsorship efforts, and with that, I'll ask Lisa to step up if she can, and give us an update on that.
All right, so I'll start with some of our successes, and so for the dog park, we have identified a sponsor, and we also, if you recall, that the, in the sponsorship program, we had identified that there was a level of 10,000 was our platinum level, and that was our naming rights, and we thought that that 10,000 was going to be the cost to install that element, well, now, we think it's going to be closer to 7 or 8,000 dollars, and so one of the things I'm going to want to do this evening is to tell you where we are in our fundraising, and also to maybe amend our donation sponsorship program to reflect what we think are some of the new costs. So, like I said, with the dog park, we think it's closer to probably around 8,000 to install that element, we have had a donor step forward, and is very interested in proceeding and providing funding for that, and I'm hoping to request that the council will reduce the naming rights from the 10,000 to the 8,000, and then subsequently, reduce each of those levels by the same percentage. With the bike park, it's been very successful, I've had a lot of interest in funding, I had a proposal to install in the particular area for $15,000 that we've, for the identified area today in that particular plan, and so one of the requests I'd like is to see if we could adjust the, again, the sponsorship level, we had originally thought for that particular area it'd be 25,000, but like I said, it's now coming in at about 15,000, so I want to request that we adjust it proportionate to that amount, so that's very exciting, and actually, I think I have more than enough money coming in for the bike park, there's a lot of people out there who want to donate and get this, the bike park rolling, they think it's a terrific location, the spot is very ideal to these folks. With the skate park, unfortunately, I have had nobody step forward with interest to provide funding, we've reached out to quite a few people in the community, and still there is no interest, so that's something we might want to consider discussing tonight, is that particular location, and what we'd like to do if we don't have funding, and what some of the alternatives are, whether we want to expand the bike park into that area, with the thought that maybe if somebody were to step forward, we could scale back the bike park and still have it reserved, or just leave it a blank slate, and as usage continues to grow, maybe somebody will step forward and say, hey, this is a great idea, let's put some money towards this to get that skate park in, so I'm not particularly asking anybody, the council, to adjust the skate park funding donation sponsorship, because like I said, I haven't even identified anybody, but that's where we are today, so I think we'll be just fine working with the bike park and the dog park, but again, because of some of these issues that we're facing, whether it's water, or folks stepping up to donate, we might want to rethink some of the layout of the park this evening, I think we're going to talk a little bit about that, so if you have any questions with regards to that, I'm happy to answer.
Yeah, Dennis, go ahead.
Lisa, how much would we save if we did not pave any of the skateboard area?
I think the identified cost was 20, 25,000?
About 23,000, I was just doing that calculation. Yeah, it's actually a little higher than we were doing, it's almost $26,000 with the fencing and the paving.
How difficult would it be if you allowed the bike park to expand into that area to actually move the bike park back, is that a, seems to me that's a territorial thing that may be difficult to maneuver after you've set the parameters there.
Well, I don't know, from the standpoint of, is it physically possible, absolutely, because it's just moving dirt, right, that's not a hard part to do, from a territorial standpoint, that, I haven't considered that, I think that may be an issue.
And aren't, isn't there facilities between those two right now, in that mountain?
Other facility, oh, there's the seating node and the play area where we're going to put some natural elements, you know, the tree stumps and some other items in there, but we could shift all of that towards the right, towards the unpaved skate area, and we could shift the bike park, simply because at this point, I have quite a bit of funding out there available to the bike park beyond the 15,000 that people are willing to donate, it's pretty amazing, and we could go bigger.
You know, I'm surprised that the skating community has not come forth, have they given you reasons, have they said it's, we don't like the location, it's too small, we don't...
The size isn't the matter, the issue, from my understanding, is the location, they aren't happy with the spot, yeah.
Well, we did have an offer from someone to put up facilities there, the wooden skateboard ramps, so we had interest in that.
There was interest in the wooden, I don't know that, I think they were looking to be paid, or they might fundraise for that, my only concern with the wooden ramps after now that, not that I'm a skate park expert, but I've done quite a bit of research, and because there's so much interest in this from the skating community, the manufacturers, they've been contacting me on a regular basis and providing me with their information, there is a significant difference, and in cost, between the wooden ramps and the metal fabricated ramps, the wooden ramps, of course, the lifespan can be three, maybe five years, with the significant repairs that need to be done to them, with the metal ramps, they are willing, most of the companies willing to do a 20-year warranty, so anything that should happen to those ramps, they will come out, whether it's from the environment, or you know, manufacturer defect, they will come and repair them, so their lifespan is significantly longer.
What is the cost then, what would be the cost if we had a funder to put in the metal system like you're talking about?
Well, of course, I have received a proposal from 50,000 to 150,000, so it all depends on how much, what you want to put in there, the 50,000 proposal that I received was several skate elements that, without having gone out to the community to say, hey, do you like this, I mean, I showed it to my kids, and they liked it, but I don't know what the rest of the community might think, but there's quite a few elements that would be in there, and one of the, part of the process that we would go through if we were to move forward, and we were to get a funder, or if the city were to fund that, would be to get community input on what they thought of a design, and the types of ramps that might be put in there, that's, I think that's significantly important.
Thank you.
Yeah, Mike?
Have we reached out to the organization that was raising money for the McGregor Skate Park, I know they were selling t-shirts and having fundraisers, and the boardroom was...
The board, well, and so the boardroom was spearheading, and that's who I did reach out initially to, who is very interested in doing wooden ramps, and I think there's a decision that needs to be made at some point, whether they want to do wood, which again, the lifespan is very, very short, three to five years, or if you want to do something that has a longer lifespan, that's from a contractor, that's licensed, bonded, workers' comp, and all those different things, and all the liability issues, because now you're talking, my risk management hat's coming on, and that very much concerns me is the liability issues.
Well, let me ask my favorite risk management person, John, if we have someone who donates a bunch of wooden ramps, and we put them in there, are we still covered under the liability umbrella of having a city skate park where, you know what I'm saying, we have a, basically a skateboard store that wants to provide wooden ramps for that area?
Yeah, it's our facility, if we got sued, it would be under our, it would be a liability claim like any other liability claim, and we'd have to tender it to our liability JPA, I guess Lisa would talk to the JPA before we added this to our list of facilities, just to make sure they're okay with it.
Would it be any different than the protection that places like Scotts Valley has in Santa Cruz for their skate parks?
No, the liability issues are the same, and the immunities are available to the city for injuries suffered, there are rules, specific rules on liability for skateboard parks, if we post the parks with signs requiring helmets and things of that nature, we get liability immunity for injuries that occur in those places.
It seems to me, since that we've always considered this a potential temporary place for a skateboard park, that reaching out to the boardroom again and saying, you know, if you want to provide and be the, even have naming rights to the park, and have wooden ramps in there, that we should just latch on to that and go forward, like we always have.
Another inducement, if they're concerned about their liability, another inducement is for the city to indemnify them and hold them harmless against any claims.
I don't think we were looking for a skate park that was going to last 20 years, I think that this goes right along with the way we envisioned this, and at some point, we may find another place for a skate park, I could see where the pump track could get bigger someday if we found another place for the skate park, but I'm not worried about a five-year lifespan on wooden ramps.
My concern, Councilmember Termini, with that is, you know, having volunteers, effectively having volunteers build things like this, we don't have a building code, sort of inspector process to verify that they're built to any sort of standard, I guess, it certainly gives me a lot more comfort level if we're going to a professional company that provides manufactured and tested ramps versus basically having volunteers build wooden ramps over time, so there, it is, certainly, we can explore it, but it is a little bit concerning, given the limited lifespan, given the wear and tear, given the difficult coastal environment that these things are going to be placed in.
Would that change our protections under the law, if we went with wooden ramps built by volunteers?
I don't think so, I think, you know, if we approve the design, we also get design immunity and things of that nature, there's a facility in Santa Cruz at Depot Park with the wooden ramps for the bicycles, Swenson Company, I think, put that in for the city.
Okay.
I have observed, with my close association with NHS Company, the most amazing ramps built by what you call non-professionals, but they're skateboarders, and I, there are better ramps down the street from me, at my neighbor's house, that were built by non-professionals, that look better than some of the ramps I've seen in skateboard parks, I have no qualms about letting those folks lose, this is definitely a build-it-and-they-will-come sort of an affair, and I think if we get the wooden ramps in, we may see interest in some replacement after we get some activity down there.
Can, just a question on the design, what's planned for the other side of the skateboard area, would there just be dirt?
Yeah, right now, that is blank dirt, we, our intent here was to provide the beginning of a skate park, have somewhere where you could at least have some flat land to skate on, until we got enough interest in doing the rest of it, became a financial thing, to be honest with you.
But to be clear, I think we're talking about flipping the asphalt, so that that, we would at least keep the blank area sort of near the other uses, and I think, you know, potentially, we could look at maybe putting, because the child's play area is pretty informal, it's just tree stumps, maybe putting that inside there, which would give a little bit more room, it just seems like we have a pretty constrained site, and having a large sort of unused area seems like we can, this is intended to be temporary, and they could evolve over time.
Why do we need to define this area right now, why not, why not leave the book open right now, discuss the idea of having ramps, conclude our discussion on the rest of the park, and just leave the budget as it is, as far as the skateboard park area, keep it out on the books, go and look for it, whether we can make it viable with a wooden ramp system, and give it a little time to mature here, we don't know for sure we can do that, but if we can, it sounds like the council may be interested in doing it that way, but we don't need to make a decision on all three of these spots now, we can make a final decision on both the bicycle part and the dog park, and move this project forward.
I think all we're being...
Don't pave anything, just leave it till we know what we want to do.
What we're being asked for is to approve this budget, and I think that that's what we should be prepared to do, we can always get more granular on the skateboard park part of it, but I think this budget's fine, and it's what we always wanted to do. Sorry, I...
I just have a question, Lisa, you used the word proportion, and you lost me, the dog park was at 10, and you said we're going to drop it to 8, so I calculated that as a 20% drop. So I calculated that as a twenty percent drop. And then you went from twenty-five on the bike. Does that drop it twenty percent to twenty, or are you taking it to fifteen?
I was going to take it to fifteen because that is the proposal I received for the locate... For the size that we identified.
Okay.
That fifteen would be plenty.
It was the word proportional that threw me off. What we're going to do is just adjust it to the expected cost.
You got it.
Okay, so bike goes from twenty-five to fifteen, dog goes from ten to eight, and the skate park is zero.
I'm just going to leave the skate park at what it is.
But there's no contribution for that.
I don't have any contribution.
Okay, great. That was my question.
So can you explain, maybe Steve can, where the fences go? In other words, is the kid area protected from running out onto the road also?
So, yeah, I couldn't be happier. There is a split rail fence, follow the cursor here, that's going to go along the entire edge of this portion of the park part of the property. And then the kid area will have a separate split rail fence around it. The skate park has a four-foot vinyl clad chain link fence that will go around it. And the dog park has a wire mesh fence that will surround it.
How high is that fence, do you?
I think it's forty-two inches high. So the bike park itself, the pump track area does not have a skate fence outlining it. It's a little more free form.
So the skate park, obviously, we're not concerned about someone going in there after hours if we're having a four-foot fence. Is that... What is our intent with nighttime use, or...
Well, we'll have a gate across the parking lot, so the parking lot will be closed on a nightly basis. But, yeah, we are not trying to keep people out, or... And we're trying to keep people out, but we're not going to build a barbed fence to do that. The four-foot fence is what we see at a lot of the other skate parks to, you know, just define where it is and keep the skaters separated from the other park users.
Is there a big dog, small dog section to the dog park?
There is not in this.
I know a lot of parks have that, so is that...
Yeah. Maybe Lisa can address that.
When I did the users group and we talked about the separating, they actually felt like there just simply wasn't enough room to separate it.
Okay. What is the surface in that dog park?
Natural. They do not want bark put down there because they feel like it's detrimental to the dog's paws. It doesn't feel good. It injures them. So they don't want anything in there.
Will this require a lot more water use in keeping the dust down and that type of thing, or is that even better?
Well, hopefully, natural grasses is what we're going to have.
Okay, okay.
Dog-friendly dirt.
Dog-friendly dirt.
Well, dog-friendly weeds is better. But natural.
Natural.
Lisa, can I get clarification? Since you sat down...
I know, I should just say.
Has the boardroom confirmed that they're willing, or has anyone confirmed that they're willing to put up wooden ramps on the skate park portion?
Well, you know, I wouldn't say confirmed, but I have talked to Terry. I haven't talked to him, the boardroom. I haven't talked to him lately, but we have gone in there a couple of times to talk about it, and he would love to be able to build them. I... We didn't talk about who would pay for them. That was a key piece that... Not necessarily that he's going to pay for them, but he would definitely...
So currently, we have no commitments from anyone to fund the wooden skate ramps?
That's correct.
Okay, thank you.
And Steve, correct me if I'm wrong, but we could approve this budget tonight, and you could go out to bid with the... All of the skate park improvements as an add alt on the bid?
Yeah, I could modify it that way, absolutely.
What I'm saying is they can bid a base bid and then have it added if we have a skate park.
I think if that's going to be the strategy, which I don't... I think is probably a good way to go at this point. My suggestion would be that we have some flexibility, maybe to kind of push or pull the design a little bit, just so that we don't end up with sort of unused space. You know, we finished the park and there's, you know, fence around an unused space. There's a little bit of room to kind of push and pull because all the improvements are so, you know, low-tech, if you will, that as we sort of figure out, we're going to scale the skate park, we kind of push and pull things a little bit around it. Does that make sense?
Yeah, I think it makes sense. And my sense is that this is going to have to come back to the council. Even if we approve the whole budget, the whole engineering concept, having change orders on the skate park portion. But if there is no commitment for even the wooden ramps, I think it should come back at a future date so that we can maybe consider alternative uses for that portion of the park.
If we could build a park for fifty thousand, okay, that seems to be the long threshold, Lisa, that we're looking for, when somebody coming to build a permanent park? Would this city be willing to put up half of that? To make a park happen that is actually a more permanent facility in that spot?
Maybe.
When you say park, you mean the skate park portion?
The skate park park, if Lisa said the budget, that her estimates were between a hundred... Fifty thousand and a hundred and fifty thousand. If we can get a program that we could build for fifty thousand, would the city be willing to come up with half of the cost of that if we got someone else from the outside to do the other half?
Well, I mean, I think I can only speak for myself, but I would certainly be interested. I mean, we would have to be at a point where we can review next year's budget, see where we're ending up in this year's budget. Are there any available funds? You know, what is our financial situation? What is the strength, level of commitment by a private party? But I... Yeah, I think we should be... I would certainly be open to that concept.
I would too, but at that point, I would be in the commercial ramp arena.
Okay.
You know, I'm not interested in spending twenty-five thousand to have somebody knocks wood together.
Yeah, that's worth hearing. So, but right now, we can budget and move forward with us without a decision on the skateboard park. Let it mature. Maybe there's something out there that we can deal with. Steve, you can adjust the budget.
Yeah, no, I think that would just list as an alternate bid item. There's three elements of the skate park in the estimate. One is the paving, the bio swale, which treats the water coming off of there, and then the fencing. So we'd make those three items alternate funding and remove them. That way, we can add them or delete them from the contract once we get there.
I'm a little bit hesitant about moving the parameters of the facilities, being that we already predetermined that we needed that much space for a skateboard park, and all of a sudden, we're making it... Will that make it more difficult for us to do that facility? So minor adjustments may be fine. Maybe there need more bike pump track area, but not to lose any major part of that skateboard park to do it. The intent was, when this thing walked in the door, was skateboard park, and we filled in everything around that. So, okay.
Can I have one additional question about the design, and then I want to open it up?
I have a few more elements to talk about.
Oh, okay.
We have other wrinkles.
Yes.
Thank you.
Oh, thanks.
Unfortunately, we do have some water issues there. There is a water service out there. When we had a construction project utilizing site, they worked with SoCal Creek to install a water service there. They used it for their slurry making project, I think, as one of the sewer projects. So we've recently been contacted by SoCal Creek that even though there is water on site, it's... We don't have an approved use for this park to use the water. And so we have submitted an application for them. You know, staff supports the idea, but as you all are aware, SoCal Creek is considering some strong measures regarding future development and within their district. And we do have, you know, water credits that we negotiated as part of the sale of a portion of this property at SoCal Creek. I think we can get it all worked out, but this is kind of came up in the last couple of days, and we are working with them to get this as an approved use on the site. The water use there is going to be minimal. All the landscaping that's on these plans is all drought tolerant. We will have an irrigation system put in just to keep it alive for the first year, and then essentially it gets turned off. The skate... The pump track has some, you know, you need to keep that dust free so that it has some elements or a couple of drinking fountains. The restroom facilities are going to be portable toilets, so those will be pumped out manually. So kind of have this hanging out there. Our recommendation at this point is that we move forward with getting the bids, and, you know, we'll continue to work with SoCal Creek Water. If something unexpected occurs, we would certainly return to council for further direction. So we do have a detailed estimate, which I've given you, is a hundred and thirty-five thousand dollars. And so just to close out, our recommendations are to approve the plans. It sounds like we've come up with some changes to how we're going to bid the items, but if you have any other changes, now would be a good time to bring them up. The specifications, the estimate authorize me to advertise for bids, approve a budget amendment reallocating a hundred and thirty thousand dollars within the capital improvement budget. So just as a recap for the funding, fifteen thousand dollars was allocated to this project as part of the mid-year. And then some of that, ten of that, has gone toward the design work that has taken place already, leaving five thousand dollars here with the hundred and thirty thousand dollars, which was earmarked for undetermined park projects in the last budget process. We will have the hundred and thirty-five thousand dollars available in funding for the bids. And we're also asking for you to approve the modifications to the donation and sponsorship program outlined by Lisa. Thank you.
Thank you, Steve. Yeah.
Just a question for Steve. When you mentioned the bike track, the methods for keeping down the dust, what exactly is that?
I actually asked Jamie. I think it involves probably on a weekly basis watering the track down.
Is that an automatic system, or is that someone with a hose?
I think it's someone with a hose. It can be done even less than once a week, once a month.
I was under the impression that when we sold that property, we had secured water rights for that property.
We owned the water rights to the property. It was water credits.
Yeah, we secured water credits for that property. One acre feet, a little slightly over one acre feet for the property, for the use of development of a park. And they're not arguing that. That's not part of it. It's the use of that water at this point, even though we have an existing service, so...
They have already turned down projects that own the water credits they need just preemptively. They haven't... I don't think there's any mistake in the recent decisions of the Water District that they really don't care about anyone else or anything else. They're pretty much acting, you know, unilaterally. So in that same vein, we should get some information back on what it would take for us to drill our own well on the property, let them know that.
Can I ask, what's the value of a water credit to us if we can't use them?
That's a good question.
It seems to me it affects the consideration that we entered into with the Water District for that property, that parcel. So I... To me, I think that is one of the questions that we should pose to them. It's empty value if they're... If we, you know, made that bargain.
Just to clarify the term, we received water offset credits because they have a water offset program that for any development that goes through, you have to pay for improvements in the system to reduce the water demand within the system by the amount you're using. So the net effect on the usage of the system is zero, or the demands on the system. So we have secured offset credits for one acre feet on the property. I can't say that's a water right or anything else, or a water use right. It is... It's an offset credit. They're about worth about eighteen thousand dollars an acre foot right now. You know the challenges the district is facing regarding, you know, overdraft of the aquifer and things like that. So they, you know, they'll still have an offset program, but they're looking at just curtailing all development because the offset is not enough to meet their ongoing problems. So that's just kind of clarifying the terms.
I understand, but I think with due respect to what their problems and issues are, I'm just questioning, what is the value of the bargain that we struck if they can just say, for any project, not necessarily even this project, we can't use it? And so that's... I mean, I think if you do run into difficulty with them, that we should maybe look in and address that question in relationship to that transaction.
Mr. Mayor, I will point out, you know, our read of all the documents and the rights that the city currently has is different than their staff's at this point. We're working cooperatively with them so that we can try to work through this. Obviously, you know, if we need to, we will take all available means to the city possible to exert the rights that we think that we have. In addition, just to put it out there, it's also possible, when we looked at this, that this facility could be done as a waterless park. So it doesn't necessarily doom the project. You know, I have done projects, street projects in the past where we use water trucks to water the plants to get them established during the first year. It's not desirable, but so there is a fallback. Nevertheless, there's...
A water fountain is pretty low usage. And, you know, Mr. Mayor, if I think what you're alluding to is the fact that they knew the condition they were in when they made the deal with us, and were they negotiating in bad faith, basically, giving us something they never intended to actually give us?
We'll do keep in mind that they haven't said no yet. So we're working through it. We believe that we have the rights. We're working cooperatively with them, and I'm confident that we can come to a...
To inspire them.
Okay.
Maybe on a... Just another question I have about the access and on the design. Maybe if you could bring up the layout there. Yeah, and I appreciate, you know, the kind of the pathway through the center goes all the way to the back end. Will there be... This is going to be fenced all the way around, and will there be an access from the other side of that center pathway?
There is some pedestrian openings in the split rail fence, both at this location and at this location.
This location.
Yeah, so people who, if they do decide to walk or ride up, do not have to go all the way down to the parking lot to get in. They're actually going to be here. And actually, this opening, we're going to widen a little bit so... And put some bollards in there so that if a public works or another vehicle needs to gain access in this area, we can do that without tearing down the fence. So, yes, there will be other access.
All right, thank you. So with that, if there are no other questions on the staff report, I'm going to open it up for the public now that if you would like to address the council on this particular plan for the pump track, dog park, skate park at McGregor. Is anyone that would like to address the council?
I see some aficionados out there.
Don't have any skaters out there?
Are there any skaters? Are there any bikers out there? Come and tell us.
Just give us a yahoo.
Yeah. Are you happy about this? Is that good? Okay, that's all we wanted to hear. So with that, I'm going to bring it back to the council for further deliberation and action.
I will move the staff recommendation with the adjustments to the bidding process that we listed, making all skate park improvements be an additive alternate to the bid.
Is there a second?
Second.
There's a motion and a second. Any further discussion?
Just a little clarification. You're adding in... Clarify what you're doing.
Oh, what I'm doing is I want... I'd like him to bid it as a base bid that doesn't include any of the skate park work, the paving, grading, things like that, and have an alternate for the contractor to bid on, should we decide to go for the whole enchilada.
Okay. I... We didn't... Before we were doing the question, I just wanted to have some discussion on this. You made a comment, which I wanted to agree with your comment, and that is, I like the layout of the park. I think we should not take away Rob and Peter Paul to divvy it up right just now. I believe your comment that if we build it, they will come. I believe that interest, even though the skate park might be doing a silent protest now, I think that some momentum will gain on this, and we can be a player in that. So I like the concept of leaving the designated areas as they are and pulling them out, and I think that we will probably come up with some plan. Maybe future items we have on the agenda might free up some money that can go into different areas. So I'd just like to leave it intact, and pulling out those pieces are fine, but I think that down the road, this will probably gain some interest, and we can deal with that. So that was the only comment I wanted to make. Other than that, I support your motion.
Okay, thank you, Ed. And just so everybody knows, this is planned to be construction completed by August of this year, so near the end of summer. And the work to begin in June, I think I would also like to add, maybe just direct staff, that if there is no interest in, from the skate park community, that, you know, maybe this be brought back to us somewhere around that timeframe, maybe by June, you know, as the work begins, so that the council has an opportunity to consider maybe expanding the pump track, maybe expanding the dog park at that time. So, yes, Dennis?
Just to add one note is that one key to the success of this property is safe passage from the residential areas in Capitola. So, I would like staff to further research on how we can create safe path, at least from New Brighton Middle School over to this property, and what it entails, and maybe some cooperation with the state parks in between. Be nice if we had some designated path by the time that we opened this facility, both for dog walkers and for skaters and bikers. Okay?
Thank you. So, with that, I'll call the question. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, the motion passes unanimously. Congratulations, everyone. Which will now bring us to the item 10B, which is to consider Lower Pacifico Parking Lot Operating Guidelines and renaming both the upper and lower Pacifico parking lots. The recommended action is to approve the guidelines and renaming of the lots. So, we'll begin with a staff report. Looks like Steve, you're going to stay here for that one.
I'm on again. All right. So, as you're all aware, the parking lot project is nearing completion. We will have it open for parking by the end of this month. There may be a few items to clean up before we deem the parking lot complete, but we will be certainly by the summer have a complete project. Upon completion, it is intended to open the lower parking lot for public use on seven days a week. As the city manager mentioned earlier tonight, the coastal commission approval was granted yesterday to charge for parking at the existing rate of 50 cents an hour in the parking lot. And I just want to be clear, because, you know, as part of the project, and it remains part of the project, that the restroom remodel was removed from the current project. We had budgeted about $75,000. The estimated cost for refurbishing that bathroom came in twice that to three times that amount. And so, it was decided to defer that. We are now working with an architect and pursuing options of some prefabricated buildings. A lot of the state parks use these prefabricated restroom buildings. I think the restrooms at Anagen Cummings were prefabricated in the county. So, and those look like they can be done in the $75,000 to $100,000 range. So, that will involve, you know, demoing everything that's there and bringing in these prefabricated buildings. So, right now, that's something that will have to occur later on, and the bathroom project's not included. So, you've all seen this. I just want to include it in case there are specific questions about the usage of the lot. I'll run through it really quickly. We have Bay Avenue up here. We will have an entrance and an exit off of Bay Avenue. We have parking all along. All of the parking in here is done on a porous material for drainage reasons, to treat and capture drainage and control the amount of, the rate of discharge of the flow to a pre-development rate. So, there's parking, all the white areas in here are the parking stalls, which will be on the porous material. Here's the restroom location. There is some handicap parking in this area. There was a slide repair that was done in this area. And coming south, we have a small turnaround or roundabout here. Being done at the same time, although not part of this project, we took one of the coaches that was in the existing Mobile Home Park and moved it and have completely refurbished it into, it's going to house the parking enforcement team for the police department and also become a storage area for the police department. So, that, you know, it's not part of this project, it's getting done at the same time because of the necessary of grading and all that. Regarding the guidelines and regulations, the proposed regulations, guidelines, however you want to call them, these are the consistent with what we have with the upper lot. And it's our recommendation that we continue these guidelines. So, those would be paid parking from 8:00 a.m. to 8:00 p.m. at the rate of 50 cents an hour. No overnight camping, although you can leave a vehicle there overnight, and you can't camp in it. Vehicles must be parked between the white lines. No vehicles over 20 feet in length. No loitering or skating. There will be a 72-hour parking limit, so somebody can come and park there for the weekend. They'll have to pay the meter whether, during the, from 8:00 a.m. to 8:00 p.m., but stay there for up to 72 hours. The 72-hour limit is consistent with what's done on the rest of the city streets, to keep people from storing their vehicles on city property. And kind of the general disclaimer, the use of the lot is at one person's own risk and city capital and not be responsible for damage from the use of the lot. So, the name, you know, I know you've all been, we've had oral testimony about the name of the lot. In January, the Traffic and Parking Commission recommended that the name be officially changed to Beach and Village Parking Lot 1 and 2. The reason we, they recommend continuing to differentiate between the upper and lower lot, or 1 and 2, is because there may be some permanent parking programs that we could utilize. For example, we are issuing permits as part of the junior guard program that are good in the lower lot or Lot Number 2 as we move forward. Just the long-term parkers could go down there. It may be something we could do with employees of village businesses, give them passes for the lower lot. The lower lot is a little further away from the village, so the thought was to do it down there. So, that's why we continue to probably differentiate between the two lots. Staff believes that this change is a good idea and will clearly identify the parking for what its intended purpose is. And the new signage, you know, we're replacing all the signage coming into these parking lots. And here's an example of what we're doing, because the object is to try and get people headed to the Beach and Village to park there. So, this is an example of the sign. This sign right here, I think, would actually take the place of Councilman Norton's favorite sign behind the police department.
The ladies?
Directing people into, you know, people going to the Beach and Village, here's where you park. There would be one at the top of both entrances on Bay Avenue and on Park Avenue. And then, we have a series of signs, I don't have them in my presentation here, smaller signs with this message coming in on the streets that will replace the signs we have now. So, they all have the universal parking P arrows and say Beach and Village Parking on them, which I think is appropriate. But I will add, if the council chooses not to change the names, the signage within the parking lot can still reflect Lower and Upper Pacifico Parking Lot. But I do think it's critical that we identify the signs coming in as Beach and Village Parking. So, the recommendations tonight are to approve the guidelines for the remainder of 2014, and we could come back in January. We recommend coming back in January with a report, how the usage was. With the pay stations in place, we'll be able to have a comparison of how much usage we had in the number one lot or the number two lot, and we can determine if we want to make any changes to the use on either lot at that time. And staff recommendation that we approve the change from Upper and Lower Pacifico Parking Lot to Beach and Village Parking Lots 1 and 2, as recommended by the Traffic and Parking Commission. And that's my report.
Thank you, Steve. Are there questions? Steve had a question. It sounded like concerning the permit parking, that there were going to be differentiated between Lot 1 and Lot 2. In other words, somebody who maybe already has a permit for Lot 1 would have to buy a separate permit for Lot 2, or if an employee...
I think it's more of, we're going to give out special permits that are only good in Lot 2. And I think, you know, the employee permits, we may not have thought all this out, but I think that if you have a permit now, I mean, like, the village permits are good. All the village residential permits are good in the Pacifico Lot, and I think they'd be good in either lot. I think it's special permitting programs we're talking about for junior guards, for example, or employees.
I see.
We would just have for the lower lot.
Well, I, yeah, I noticed in the regulations and guidelines, and full disclosure, I have a permit, okay? Because I work in the village, and I have a permit for Lot 1. So, but I think it would be good to clarify.
Absolutely.
How, and as part of the guidelines, how is that going to apply for those who have a pre-existing permit and for new purchasers? And just one other question, Dennis, and then I'll, concerning, you said there'd be a universal parking fee signage. And I guess, I wasn't quite, as somebody enters, will the price for parking be posted so that they can see that upfront and see that it's a lot cheaper than parking in the village?
This is the sign we propose to put. It's similar to the signs there that will be at each of the pay station areas. So, if, let me blow this up a little. So, it does specify paid parking for 8:00 a.m. to 8:00 p.m. It doesn't have the rate on it, just because if we change the rate, I don't want to have to go back and change every sign, the rate will be part of the pay stations. We do not advertise the difference in parking. We will have some informational brochures about, you know, we have a map of parking in the city that will differentiate the different rates for parking in the city. So, this is the intended parking or signage we have in the parking lots at each area where there's a pay station.
It's not a standard practice to post? I mean, usually, most places I see, they post what the rates are as you go in, so people know...
It's usually on the meter.
What they're going in.
And that's what, like, in individual meters, it would be posted on the meter and at the pay stations. It is posted there.
Okay. Dennis, did you have a question?
Yeah. Since you're on the box here, Steve. Circulation. Can you talk about circulation in and out of these parking, this parking lots?
Let me get back to the... So, right now, circulation is, on the lot, has an entrance and exit at both Capitola Avenue and at Bay Avenue. So, you can enter and exit at both lots. If you enter at either end, you have to travel through the length of the parking lot, but there are opportunities to turn around in both directions and go back if you saw a spot somewhere else. Obviously, if you're coming down this area, you'd have to go back around the roundabout and back out again. So, it is a little more, have better circulation than the upper lot does, where you're stuck in one-way routes and if you, cars, and it's also very narrow aisleways in the upper lot, so if a car's waiting, you can't get around him. Having two lanes here, you should be able to get around anybody who's waiting for parking.
Coming out onto the Bay Avenue. Making a left turn there is going to be very difficult. Is it possible we can just do a right turn and direct people over to Park Avenue?
I mean, certainly that's possible. I've talked with the traffic engineer who kind of looked at the traffic impacts of this as part of the coastal development permit process. And although he didn't do a detailed analysis of how many cars coming out of this lot are going to turn left here, his feeling was, because the intersection of Monterey and Bay is a always stop, that there should be enough gaps in this direction to get people out of here. Now, if queuing from this intersection back goes across this intersection, my recommendation is we paint a keep clear on top of this driveway, so that, you know, when people do what they're supposed to, they'll keep that driveway exit open. And I think there will be enough gaps. I mean, you can turn left there now. If this does begin to queue, I mean, my feeling is we should try it first. I really don't think it's going to be dangerous. If the queuing here becomes a problem, obviously, people could turn around. There's room for them to turn around and get back out.
What do you mean by that?
Well, so if this is, four cars are queued back to here, the fifth car can decide to go out Capitola Avenue. He's not stuck waiting here. The first couple of cars may be stuck, but after that, they'll be able to get out.
Is there any way to open that vision line farther than it is?
Well, we did, we did raise the grade on this exit here before it was as steep, and as you came out of it, you had a hard time visioning. We have leveled the top of this out so that you can do have, you're up higher as you're sitting in your car looking for it. And, you know, we could, the vision line going in this direction is not bad, and we could certainly look at if, I'm not sure what the red curb situation is here. I don't think there's any parking between here and this driveway and beyond that driveway. I don't think there's any parking in this block of Bay Avenue. So, I don't really think that vision's going to be a problem, given that we're at a higher elevation when we're sitting in our car now.
Okay. My other question is regarding, three quarters of the year, our existing parking lot is not full. So, in reality, we don't need this parking lot three quarters of the year. Would it not be more economical and better for management if we close one of the two parks during those three quarters of the year where we don't need them?
I think that's something that experience will tell us, and certainly, we know that, you know, we don't need all this parking in the middle of winter, and that would be something... I think that's why we want to come back and review the uses, or the council can establish that now. But I think that certainly this lower portion, because this is a police service building, you know, maybe we do a closure here. I don't think we'd want to, you know, close it off here. We could close it off there. Those are certainly options we could consider, and you're right, we don't expect these lots to be full year-round.
So, what you're suggesting now is that we look at things for a period through the summer and see how the...
Yeah.
Well, it isn't, we'd have to go longer than that, because we're looking at, we're looking at the busy time of year.
My suggestion is through the calendar year of 2014.
For the calendar?
We take a look at it and see what kind of, we know during the summer, I think, we'll have cars in and out of both lots. But you're right, in the winter, we can come back and reevaluate it.
Okay. Now, the lighting, Steve? What do we have out there, and what control do we have as far as glowing up into the neighbors' houses?
It's all downcast.
And when will they be on, when will they be on all night long, or will they...
They will be on all night long, just like they are in the upper lot. They are downcast lighting and, you know, should be a minimal impact to the residents. Obviously, they're going to see illuminated area, but they won't have lights shining in their property.
Thank you very much.
Any other questions? Yes, Mike?
Well, with the pay stations that we'll have throughout the rest of this year, I think it's time for us to get a really accurate count of how well both lots do. And because I still hear people say, why are we building another parking lot? The upper lot's only full four days a year. And I live a block away, and I look at that parking lot all the time, especially this year with the lack of rain. That parking lot is briskly used all through this last winter. So, I'd really like to know, when it comes back to us, what kind of usage we get on a, you know, Lot 1, Lot 2, or throughout the year. I know it's full during warp to warp. I know that it's full, you know, for Bagonia Festival. I know it's full for Art and Wine. When else, you know, how...
One judge who might have that, Mike, is the revenue itself. We would know what the revenue changes.
Right. And, you know, and we'll get an idea of, you know, what kind of, you know, flow we have. And, you know, I agree, once we know what the patterns are, we'll know what we need to deal with. And a question for the chief, and I kind of can answer my own question, and that is, we have a police facility at the bottom of that lot, so there's going to be a police presence down there. I'm concerned that, you know, it's a heavily monitored lot, so we don't have any nefarious activities going on there. Parking lots can draw that. So, I'm sure this will be the favorite drive-through and secret hiding place for police watching the four-way stop over the top. Not, I'm sorry, not secret, strategic place to park.
There will be activity there, especially with our parking enforcement officers and the storage that we're going to be using there. So, there is going to be some presence, again, right where it curves to the right, we're not going to be able to see back, but it's going to be an area that we will consistently patrol, just like Jade Street Park and the other parks that we do have.
Great. And I'd also like to see, after we get these, and I noticed no vehicles over 20 feet, after we get this usage throughout the year, it would be nice to have some designated bus parking spots. Maybe not in the lower section, it's a little chopped up, and perhaps the upper one, the long sections, because I've heard from tour companies that frequent our fair city, that their biggest challenge is where to go after they drop off their 50 visitors.
That's certainly a possibility. I think concerns with the upper lot is it's so narrow, the driveways up there are so narrow. I'm not sure you could get a long bus through there, but it's something we can look at and know there's a need.
Thanks. I have nothing else.
Okay. Thank you. Yes, Ed?
Steve, you mentioned, I know there was some kind of a plan, that we wanted to close off the...
Steve, you mentioned, I know there was some kind of a plan that we wanted to close off the, the lot. There, there is going to be a gate up at the top at Bay Avenue? Or is there not?
There is not, we certainly.
We have no plans to be able to close it off at this point?
At this point, there's no gates being constructed as part of the project.
As part of the project.
They're pretty simple to build, if we want to build them. And we can also, you know, if we're doing a temporary closure, we have lots of barricades, so. But at this point, no, we do not have a metal gate that opens and closes.
Okay, I wasn't sure if, I know we had talked. I know we had talked about possibly closing it at certain times, and, but there's no plans for any gate at this time. Logically, it would be past the roundabout, and maybe up at the top, though, that would be, because police.
Yeah, I think, uh, you know, maybe it's somewhere in the middle here. I think we need, you know, some police parking for them to do their businesses in there. There are four spots here, but I think most of those are, uh, handicap spaces. So somewhere in here, maybe it's at the corner, we can, and certainly, we could do it at, at Bay Avenue, so.
And, and do keep in mind that, you know, there's a real yin and yang to keeping the parking lot open and closed. You know, when it's open, hopefully, we have people going through it, which hopefully doesn't, you know, keeps the limit on nefarious activity. It may ultimately turn out that there's times when it is easier to close it, and it does work out better. But it may be that if we close it, the only people back there are people that, that are looking for a hideout. So I, I think it is something we need to monitor, and we're, we're going to get great usage data with all these parking meters and the data that comes out of them. So we should have a real good picture for how many people are using it and when, and what the, what the best plan is after a year's worth of data.
Great, thank you.
I wanted to ask a question about the naming, and particularly, uh, well, first of all, the, between one and two, will the parking spaces be numbered, um, you know, distinctly or consecutively?
Yes.
Okay.
So, I mean, I don't remember the number, but I think we started 500 in the upper lot and go through 700 and something or other. And down there, I think we are, uh, we skip about 20 different numbers before we start there, and it goes up to 900 and something. So, yes, there's no repeat in the numbers. And, and you'll be able to pay for any of the spaces actually in the city at any paystation. So they all are individually numbered.
Okay. And I was just curious about why, uh, the Traffic and Parking Commission, um, because it seems like they did, uh, discuss the concept of lower and upper, which to me is more intuitive than one and two. But, because it seems to me people would like, well, which one's one and which one's two? I, I don't quite know. Were, were you a part of that process, Steve? Did you kind of get an understanding? I mean, some of the emails I got, it says, well, they discussed that, but they opted for one and two instead.
I think it was, um, more if you're not part, you don't know the geography of them, upper and lower doesn't mean a whole lot. Once you're there, it makes a little more sense, but from a familiarity standpoint, um, you know, the upper is above a structure, and the lower's the lower part of the structure. And, and so they thought just, um, not using the upper or lower, because they happen to be geographically separated, that one and two serve that function better.
Okay, thank you. Yes, any other questions?
Yes, I got another one question, Steve. It sounds like we, we taken in a, a concept to accommodate for the junior guards and their using that facility there for, are they, they're talking about drop-off, or are they talking about just where mothers park away?
No, our, our goal here is, I mean, um, is to try and get some of the, the junior guard parents out of the village and, and.
As far as their parking?
As far as their parking, yeah.
Okay, okay. We have a program now that requires a certain number of permits that are, that need to be taken or paid for by the merchants down in the village. But it does not require that every employee have a parking permit. Would that be a consideration, where if you have a business down there, or you, or you have employees, you're required, we, we have a control, we already know the number of employees, because we have business licenses and we have that facility? Since, since this, this contribution by this community is really to the benefit, the highest benefit is the merchants in the village, or, or visitors to the village, let's say. That one way that would help us in paying for it, and also help the neighborhoods in keeping, uh, employees from parking in our neighborhoods, which to me, that, I see that more than I see visitors coming to my neighborhoods, mostly employees, is that if we required every merchant to buy a parking pass for a year for every employee that they have, you would get employees, employees don't have to pay for the parking in there, then, then they're going to park there. The reason they park it up in my neighborhood or the surrounding neighborhoods is because of the fact that they don't have to pay there. So it should be a consideration in, in far as of the financing of this parking structure, which we're trying to get people to park in, and also in the financing of a future facility there, that, that the, the merchants and the businesses there contribute in that way, in paying for the, the, every employee should have a parking pass, and it should be paid for by, by the merchants and not the city.
As, I believe our, our permit parking program is, is part of our LCP. So, I mean, we've taken an amendment to our permit parking program to do that, is something, but it's certainly something that the Traffic and Parking Commission has talked about, is getting the employees to park there and incentivizing ways to get them to park there, and, and mainly to get them out of the residential streets.
Well, I think if they had a parking permit, that would make it, that would get them out of the neighborhoods.
Yeah, yeah. So, um, we, we'd be happy to, to look into that and what's involved in that. From the, you know, from the employer's standpoint, you know, I know some of the restaurants there have hundreds of employees, because they all work small shifts. So, um, how we feel that, I'm not sure we want to give out that many permits, um, but it's something we'd have to look into.
They would be buying, they're parking somewhere. No matter how many employees they have, they're parking somewhere. So the, the point is, is, is that if they had parking permits, and they have to buy them, that's just part of being an employer down there. We're not asking for a parking district, which almost every jurisdictions, including the city of Santa Cruz, makes the, makes those businesses pay for the parking structures. In this case, the city and the residents of this community are picking up the tab on this thing. That it seems like a pretty small contribution in my eyes to, to making this thing work. Thank you.
Okay, any other questions on the staff report? With that, I'll, um, open it up to the public. Is any member of the public that would like to address the council on this side?
Good evening, long time no chat. Uh, my name is Nels Westman, I am the Chair of your Traffic and Parking Commission. As regards naming, the staff report pretty much nails the recommendation of the commission. And while I agree that the name Beach and Village Parking Lot One or Two is slightly long, it is clearly descriptive, and it clearly communicates that it serves both the village and the beach. And I think this is important to communicate to visitors, to our community. Uh, no doubt, locals and staff will quickly come up with a working contraction that will get the job done. My guess, Lot One, Lot Two. The commission has also started some brainstorming on strategies for the smart utilization of both Lot One and Lot Two, to leverage the additional parking to protect nearby residential neighborhoods, to help village employees to improve shuttle bus operations, while at the same time, building the critical revenue streams that will someday make a permanent parking solution a reality. And I just, um, offhand want to respond to Dennis's suggestion that we close the parking lot for three-quarters of the year. That really seems quite counterintuitive to me. And it also seems that all of the people that have, uh, invested well over a million dollars in creating this temporary facility, we're kind of getting shortchanged if we're only allowed access to it for one quarter of the year. So I would definitely, um, urge the council to go slowly on the concept of closing that parking lot. If just one or two or three cars park in it, uh, that's better than, than them going and parking in, uh, in the neighborhood. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Nels. Anyone else?
Good evening, I'm Jim Cavanaugh, I live on Pilgrim Drive, just above the parking lot. And I thought you'd like to know, the parking light, light, the lights are on. They came on a couple of days ago. And, uh, in terms of keeping me awake at night, they don't, actually. The lights work, I think, as they're supposed to, and they cast all the light downward. And actually, you thought I was going to complain, right? The only light that really shines, we have a two-story, the two-story house on the hill above there, and the only light that we get is actually reflected off the pole. There's no light coming from the light fixture itself. All the light from the fixture goes down, and it's really not a bother. But I did have a question. Our, I wrote an email about this, and then the city manager answered it, but, uh, it was due to, it was about the temporary nature of this parking structure, and they strung all these electric wires overhead. And virtually no construction is done in the past, what, 10 or 20 years, where the electric wires are not put underground. And the electric wires are overhead, because this is a temporary parking structure. And I was wondering how temporary this parking structure is, and what the additional cost would have been to put the wires underground, just because they look really tacky.
Yes.
How temporary is it, Dennis?
One year.
You know, I, I think that timeframe temporary, I mean, in, uh, government terms, um, could be, um, extensive, five to 10 years. Or it could be, um, as short as Dennis, um, thinks it may be, one year. I think what it turns on, the, the grand, uh, plan is to build a, a structure on the upper parking lot. I believe that's number one.
Correct.
Good. So once that structure is built, uh, then the lower lot would be available for another use. All those, that infrastructure would come out if, in fact, it was going to be turned into a park. The, um, also, the timeframe is, is, tied to, is going to be affected by how quickly, uh, the developer of the old Capitola Theater lot, uh, may build a hotel. If he moves quickly, uh, you may see a, a structure, uh, go up there within a shorter timeframe, um, than five to 10 years. So, you know, it is a, um, uh, kind of loose term. And it's really, I think, up to the will of the community here, as to how quickly they want to be able to build that, uh, uh, second structure. Now, in terms of what the additional cost would have been to put the, uh, utilities underground, uh, do we, Steve, do you have a figure on that?
I think it's, um, it was about $30,000, actually. We, we did do a design element that included undergrounding all the wires. And, uh, and then, uh, based on those pricing and, and price of the whole project in our budget, that was one of the items we eliminated, and it was about $30,000.
Well, that, and then, and also remodeling the, the restroom there. So I think that those are the justifications for why, uh, the utilities were not put underground.
Didn't look very good, it's unfortunate.
I, I agree. And, and, you know, and you're right, they don't, but, you know, if, they don't look good anywhere. And they're everywhere in this community still. And, and hopefully, it will drive us to really try to work harder to turn that ultimately into what, uh, we as a community want it to finally be. So, yeah, we don't, we don't have that, uh, the unsightly poles there.
Oh, I'm good with that, as long as you don't build the $10 million parking structure by using a parcel tax.
Uh, when, no, I mean, well, even if that were to be proposed by a future council, we would have to go to the vote of the residents to be able to accomplish that. And so, again, it's the will of the public that's going to drive this. And thank you for coming and, and speaking to us this evening. Uh, is anyone else that would like to address us? And so, let's.
Hey, uh, James Wallace, 608 Gilroy Drive, Capitola. Um, I was a member of the G-PAC, the G, you know, um, the New General Plan that you guys, I think, I think the Planning Commission passed it. And I just wanted to remind everybody that, um, in the general plan, um, first of all, I want to say we're really glad to see the council and the Parking Commission work together to get this temporary parking lot up and going. It's something we really needed, so it's good to see government working like that, and that's great. I just want to remind the council that the overall feeling from the general plan, and it's in the general plan, from all the public meetings we had at Jade Street, the community really wants to see that eventually turn to open space sooner than later. So let's not lose, and I was hearing Mayor Story say, hey, maybe even having those ugly wires up there will get a ton quicker. So, so then I remind you guys, let's get a plan going, a strategy, to see how we can finance the next phase of this. Because when you walk that property, it'd be a real shame to see it just, just a parking lot. It's a, it's a wonderful asset for the community, it's right in the center of town, it could be used for so many things. And the community could decide that down the road. So, um, from what you, from what the council's saying tonight, I'm encouraged to hear everybody saying, well, you know, it's, I hope it's not five to 10 years, I'd rather see it be three to five years, hopefully, I think that's realistic. But are you going to have a, a team, or a financiers that could show you how it, how it could pencil out? How we could pay for it? Is there plans to get that together, to have, you know, the experts look at putting the pencil on and saying, if two and two make five, can we afford this thing? So please, uh, please get that together, because the community would really benefit from having that eventually revert back to open space. And, uh, we have the wristband, and it's supposed to be open space, but the community is really not allowed to use it. So I'd hate to see another beautiful place of Capitola be turned into a place where you're just going to park your car and, when it could be used for such a better thing. So all in all, good luck. And, uh, with the junior guard parents, um, have you talked with them, Steve, about a strategy to get the moms to use that?
Well, I, um, I actually wasn't involved in that, putting that together, but I do know that, you know, they are, as parents sign up for junior guards, they are issuing the permit and telling them.
Because the one thing, like, the little, the little guards, and the, the instructors, because when my kids did it, they used to walk them to the top of the hill, up above the wharf, and encourage them to park there. No mom is going to let her kid walk through the village when there are only the little guards up to the parking lot or somewhere else to meet them. But if the instructors, obviously, you probably know this, already offer to walk them back up, that's part of the deal. Then you'll have success, as long as they know their kids are safe being escorted from the beach to the drop-off point, it would work. If the kids are supposed to walk by themselves, they'd probably say, no, I'm going to go pick my kid up.
No, we are working with the, with the recreation.
But all in all, good job, council, for getting this, and to the Parking Commission for getting this temporary parking lot, uh, done. And, uh, let's move on to get a permanent parking solution and return that to the open space. Thank you.
Thank you, James. Is anyone else like to address the council? Seeing none, I'm going to close the microphone, and we'll bring it back to the council for deliberation and action. Who'd like to begin?
I, I don't have a lot to say about it, a lot of work has been done ahead of us. It does warrant consideration at the end of this year. I suppose Beach and Village Parking One and Two is as good a name as any. We could, uh, you know, the mind reels of the number of parking lot naming jokes I can come up with. I won't even start, because I'll never stop. So I'd have to just go along with the staff recommendation and parking and traffic recommendation.
Sound a motion?
I'm glad to see that is the motion, and, by the way, I'm glad to see that there's an in and an out, both at the top and the bottom. Very important, very good. And I guess it remains to be seen what's going to happen at the top, because I would agree with Dennis. Uh, I'm holding my breath in the left turn up there, but I'm willing to wait and see.
Yeah, I, I do think we'll add a, a keep clear up there, based on that. And, uh, I think that'll help, but I agree, if it's, it's a problem, we should, we'll come right back and address it.
And we certainly need to hear from the, the folks that live the closest to the park, should there be, um, you know, disruptions down there that changes the quality? I mean, I'm all in favor, as we all are, of getting the cars out of the neighborhood and improving the life in the neighborhoods. I also don't want to create a problem that degrades the quality of life in close proximity to the parking lot, so.
I'll, I'll second that motion, I have a few comments, though.
Okay, there's a motion and a second, why don't you go ahead with your comments?
First of all, I want to, I want to thank Mr. Cavanaugh for coming and, and sharing your, uh, honest comments that were, I do feel were constructive. Just, I think one thing that is important to us is that it is designated to be a temporary parking lot. And because of that, I think we valued not putting any more money than possible in there. And the $30,000 was, we wanted to think of as a significant savings. With regards to the parking lot, I think, uh, a lot of work has been done by the Traffic and Parking Commission. We're, we're excited about this lot, because the first thing we're trying to do is just make it a test to see if it's going to handle the parking and circulation problems that we know we've had for many, many years. So I think we just need to let the park happen. I'm not really willing, like Mike said, to do a lot of changes right now, I just, I think it's a great plan, everything that's designed. Let it work, you know, I, I, I'm not sure that I agree that three-quarters of the year, it's not going to be used. I, I think, uh, when this thing opens, and it looks like it's going to open in May, I, I can see, I do the months, May, June, July, August, September, October, at least six months are going to be, with the weather we have, it's going to be viable. When we, I think the suggestion was to evaluate it till, till the end of the year, and I think that's a great concept. What we do in January, February, March with that lot, I think I'm open to that, you know. We've talked about other uses to use it, but I think right now, it should be for parking. With regards to making any changes, I think the keep clear might be a good suggestion, you know, I mean, that, I'll leave that up to you. I think we can see what works and doesn't work, and I'd rather take that posture, you know, whether we need to put up gates or anything else like that. I think it's a great plan, it's going to, definitely, I hope, I don't want to say definitely, I hope it's going to relieve the parking in the neighborhood. I think one of the big problems we have is that people resisted coming to Capitola just because of the parking. So, I don't want to say that it's not going to be used, because maybe, hopefully, we're going to have more people come here, we're going to have a place to park them, they're not going to park on Park Avenue, they're not going to park over on River View, they're going to, they're going to use the lot. The rates are certainly cheap enough, so I, I support the recommendation, it goes with staff recommendation, and I like the project, and I think it's great.
Dennis?
Maybe we can make the, the polls out there a project of the Arts Commission. Totem polls. There's got to be some cosmetic.
They could be carved. They could be carved. Or at least painted.
It's...
Dark color.
It's not hidden my feeling on this parking lot, and it breaks my heart to look and see what we've done down there, but I can't turn back the clock. I have to deal with it and make it operate the best I can with this situation. I, I would like to see some, a movement forward by the city and the city council, and putting together a program of financing our parking situation and, and moving towards a permanent parking structure on the upper lot, as we've seen directed by our G-PAC, our, our Traffic and Circulation Committee, and this council speaking for it. That, I think now is the time to start and direct, direct our city manager to start looking at means of funding and what methods we have and what, what can be done to, to finance this long-term. And again, I, I, I fall to, to time and, and a hotel or, or other improvements coming in the city that would help pay for that. That, that, it's not too, it's not too soon to do that. And that if we want to see something within the two to five-year period that we're talking about, we really need to start now. And also, it helps us in plan for other, other facilities and how we use them in our community. The thing that bothers me the most, we had, actually, with this park down below, we had a solution to our Jade Street Park situation, and we let that go by. We still have the problem with the Jade Street Park situation, where we don't own the property, and we have to negotiate to even use it. This could have been our park, but we, we made that move now, and, and I will continue to lobby, even after off this council, to turn that property into a park. And I, I've heard from this community, Lard, Lard and Cloud, and I will take it to a vote of the community if I have to, that we will turn that property on that lower parking lot there into a park someday. And those are my statements, and if you gave me a choice of names of the park, can I have one?
Oh.
Okay.
City.
Okay. Okay. The Transient Overflow Temporary Parking, Parking Park, soon to become the Pacific Ho Park within five years. Is that too long a sentence to go?
That's a big sign.
Sorry.
It's a big sign.
Okay. That's all I have to say, thanks, Sam.
Thank you, Dennis. And one, I want to congratulate staff and everyone here, the, everyone at the Traffic and Parking Commission for all your hard work in making this happen. I, I think this is a significant achievement by all of us, and I look forward to when we have the ribbon cutting on this new parking lot. However, I do feel, I mean, just building it is not going to be enough. We need to start developing the, the signage and having creative ways of, of getting people to be aware of where it is and to actually go over there and use it in park and not drive around the village, not continue to drive through the neighborhoods. And I think that, that is a, going to be a function of ongoing education, ongoing engineering, and, and other, you know, creative methods. So, I hope that the Traffic and Parking Commission will continue to look at that, develop the shuttle program there so that we can get full utilization. And, and I do fear, I mean, I think that we would kind of undercut people's habits of using it if we were to close it and open it, close it and open it. And I think we, what we want to do is get people to be aware of it, to get people to use it on a regular basis. And so, that is going to be an ongoing effort. I also agree with Dennis that we need to start, as soon as this parking lot is open, we need to start, and I, I would like to include in the motion directing staff to start analyzing and evaluating how we finance the construction of the upper lot structure. Because even if you're going to do it within five years, the work needs to start now to be able to do that. And so, we should start to proceed on that, develop some tracking, develop some momentum, and develop some excitement among the community about what this could potentially become. Because that's where you're going to gain the will, and where you have the will, the finances will follow. And so, I, I would certainly support you and Dennis. I'll be long off the council by that time that happens, but at least I would hope that, you know, I was a part of making that into a, a really jewel of an, I mean, I would like to see it as open space as a park. I, I'm not going to dictate the future councils of the community about ultimately what they want to do with that property, but that would be my vision. So, if the maker of the motion is amenable to that amendment.
Yes.
To it, thank you, and the second as well?
Yes.
I appreciate it. And so, I, I think enough talking, so all in favor of the motion?
Aye.
Aye. The motion passes unanimously. Thank you, everyone. Thank you, everyone, for coming this evening and speaking to us. Which will bring us to item C, which is design, this must be Steve Knight, is that, this is what's going on here? Consider finalizing the design and funding for the Esplanade and Stockton Avenue intersection improvements and authorize advertising the project for construction bids. The recommended action is to approve the Esplanade and Stockton Avenue's intersection improvements and to authorize the advertising the project for construction. Steve, take it away.
Once again, good evening. The council actually initiated this project or approved some plans in February for this project. Fortunately, as we've delved into some of the details a little farther, we, we've found it necessary to make some changes. And then, in addition to that, there's been discussion of potentially trying to encourage more cooperative public-private funding for sidewalk improvements in the village, which have a direct bearing on, on the scope of work on this project. So, tonight, we're, we're going to kind of talk about all sorts of details with this project and try and finalize the scope of what we go out to bid with, what gets constructed now, maybe some, what gets delayed, and, and try and move forward. So, the, the minor revisions that were included in the plan sheet that's in, in your agenda packet is new ADA guidance, I wouldn't call them regulations, encourage ADA ramps at the corners to be separate so that you don't have one that kind of spits you out and you go either direction, they align with the crosswalks. So, we have done that, we've, have a separate ramp for each direction of the sidewalk. We've changed the bulbout to include an in-ground planter. Originally, we had planned to just use the pots there, and I think the thought was it would make more sense to have an in-ground planter, probably still utilize a couple of the pots there, but that's a pretty minor change. And then, there was request to look at potentially widening the sidewalk on the eastern side of Stockton Avenue, and we have facilitated that, although it does involve potentially removing a, one of the, a single 24-minute parking zone in that spot. Possible scope changes of the work, like I mentioned, is whether we want to consider removing all the sidewalk reconstruction from this project, just focus on the crossing improvements so that we can seek to facilitate cooperative public-private funding. And this is really, evolves from the Esplanade sidewalk project, which we're 95% complete with at this point, where we've partnered with all the property owners of the restaurants along the Esplanade and essentially split the cost of widening and putting a new sidewalk in that area. And the thought is, do we want to try and continue those efforts for other sidewalks throughout the village? We have had interest expressed to us by at least three property owners, properties in the village, they want to, are interested in, in doing a similar type project. One of them includes part of the sidewalk on this project, others are on Capitola Avenue. So, there, there's interest out there from other property owners of getting, you know, improving the sidewalks in the village, and they're willing to help pay for it. So, the thought here is we would, if we wanted to remove that funding or remove that scope from this project, it would obviously reduce the cost to below what we have budgeted for the project, and we can then set that money aside and, and come forward with improvement plans as property owners are approach us. The sidewalk replacement projects then would probably, or I would say certainly would, would take place in the fall. It's not something we really would want to take under, and that's what I've been telling a lot of the property owners. So, to review the, the design of and the concepts of the project, it takes two crosswalks that currently go across Stockton Avenue and combines them into one. It widens sidewalk along the eastern side, eastern side of Stockton Avenue by 18 inches. It eliminates 124-minute parking space. It constructs a median protection area in the middle of the new crosswalk. It narrows the vehicle lanes through the crosswalk, which does a great deal to slow down traffic. And it formalizes the bulbout currently defined by potted plants by building a raised bulbout. And, and the raised bulbout is more than just defining it, it allows us to provide the ADA ramp so we can move the crosswalks around. Here's the design document that's in your agenda packet. So, you can see we have the separate ADA ramps for each sidewalk. Currently, as we know, this is the sidewalk that we will be eliminating across this breach. As, you know, it's, it's unprotected, it crosses through three traffic lanes, and the idea here is we combine it into one. It has a short crossing to a protected area, and another short crossing across the next lane. The sidewalk we're talking about, this sidewalk is all rather old and deteriorated. 95% of it is one property owner of the, of this building at the corner here. This property owner has expressed interest in considering a cooperative project to help us pay for it. Timing of it's a little difficult, and that's what we're, we're working on, and we, we want to consider removing it from this project. There's also sidewalk along here. That property owner's been approached, and right now, we're, we're still working with them. They have not expressed an interest in cooperating. So, if we pull that out, it makes this project a little difficult to build in this area, but I, I do think we could do it. And let's see, so the median island separated crosswalks, the planter will be in this area. We'll do a combination of low drought-tolerant vegetation in here with one or two palm trees, I think is the, the idea. It would be something that'll be planted by Public Works crews after this is constructed. Unfortunately, there's a, a recent development in like last day on this project. The Coastal Commission has notified the city that this project does require a coastal development permit. I know both the city manager and city, and the city attorney and community director have had lots of conversations with them about it, and they can certainly talk to it better than I can. But I think the direction we're recommending at this point is we, rather than fight the Coastal Commission at this point, is that we do go through the permit process and make a, a application that would be considered by the Planning Commission at this point. We do that concurrently while we're out to bid on the project. The project doesn't need to go to the Coastal Commission for approval, it's just, it needs a coastal development permit. That can then get, if it's approved by the Planning Commission or not approved, it can be appealed to the city council. Ultimately, that decision could be appealed to the Coastal Commission if it went that far. So, if, you know, all the approvals go through and there's no appeals, it can be done pretty quickly. So, my recommendation tonight is to approve the design modifications and finalize the scope of work, mainly regarding the inclusion of the sidewalks. Direct staff to submit an application for a coastal development permit for consideration by the Planning Commission and provide direction to staff on the creation of a village sidewalk replacement cooperative project. That's the end of my report.
Any questions? Dennis?
If I'm not mistaken, the village master plan had a coastal permit. This is part, this is the area that's encompassed in the village, in the master plan?
I actually don't think the master plan was formally adopted by the council. It was approved...
So, the slow street plans was?
The, the project, the 2000 project on Capitola Avenue was approved, and it came out of that, but my research indicates that there was no formal adoption of the entire master plan. Because it included one, you know, reversing the direction on Esplanade and, and things like that, so. I might be happy to look at it again, but I'm pretty sure that...
Okay.
As a concept, it was...
Okay, I could be wrong. The, the face in this development now, Steve, is, is that, is that without having cooperation of the adjacent property owners, that you're, you're putting that, at least the sidewalk work off till, till fall. Is that correct? But can you go ahead and do the, can you go ahead and do the crosswalk now and the bulbout?
Yeah, we could do the bulbout, because the bulbout's part of the street, and we could do the ADA ramps, which would be required as part of this. And that would be my, and the landscaping and the street lighting, there are streetlights, I failed to mention in that, that we could put in. So, that would be our recommendation if we don't want to proceed.
And when can you do that?
It's going to be, it's, unfortunately, with all the, the delays, it's going to be a summertime project, but I really think we could, you know, build the bulbout and all, and all that quickly and with minimal impacts, certainly minimal impacts to pedestrians in the area, traffic impacts, we can do our best to mitigate.
What, what would be the impact if we just put the whole project out and did it all at once in, in fall? I mean, what, I know, I know we, we don't improve a dangerous intersection at that point, but...
If we, I'm sorry.
I can't, I can't picture being, tearing this thing out in the summertime and...
So, if we put it off, if we put...
Put the whole project off till, till fall.
Yeah, with, with what we've had for, for many years now, and until then, and, you know, by then, we, we have a...
We can work out all the deals.
Good pricing and, and get it done quickly in the fall.
The property owner, Mr. Duer, who owns the, I guess it's called the Polar Bear now, I want to call it the Olet, they have indicated an interest of potentially moving forward more quickly. And we've talked about, we've said that if we were going to do the project and they were going to reimburse us, we'd need to be talking about a fall schedule at this point. They've indicated that if we have plans and specs, they may be interested in building it and having us reimburse them and having us inspect it, and they think they may be able to do it more quickly. So, that, that is, that is, there's one scenario in which we could get all the work done coming into the summer, but, you know, the, the urgency, I think, you know, is, is, is not, it's been this way for a long time. So, I do think we could live with it through the summer if we wanted to.
We're in the middle of Easter week now, there really isn't a long break between now and, and summertime. It may be better just to put this thing off until we have everything where we have agreements with the other end of the sidewalk, which we don't have agreement on. That would be the north, is that the north end, north end of the sidewalk?
Yeah.
And then, and then you say David Ling is, there's a possibility getting David Ling also?
I, I've actually not heard from him, I've heard from other property owners, the Tressle Building and across the street from the Tressle Building.
Boy, it'd sure be nice if we could just get a program, we did it all at once, and instead of breaking this thing up and...
You know, along these lines, one thing we could look at, and I know lighting is there, is we could look at if we could add a streetlight, even in the existing configuration.
That would be good.
An additional streetlight in there for the summer.
Streetlight would really help.
Yeah.
Can we get one on the other side of Stockton Bridge also?
On the other side of...
Both sides of Stockton Bridge, because the crosswalk at the Venetian side of Stockton Bridge is hazardous every night.
We could certainly look at that, yeah, we could take that direction tonight and try and get new streetlights put in.
And also, and I, and I want to give credence to, you know, one of the neighbors who brought up some good points, you know, not taking away the crosswalk, I can't go along with that, because it's truly a safety issue, it has been. It has been, anyone who lives here sees people peeking around the left-hand turners trying to get across that crosswalk. But there are some good points here, and we are not, how can I say this and still respect Public Works?
That's okay.
We're not the best island builders in the world. We have priors. How good do you feel about that island with respect to John's comments about emergency vehicles, right turns into the Espinade? And do we want to consider that, you know, constructing perhaps, you know, a bolt-down temporary island before we pour a lot of concrete? Or do we want to risk the Capitol, Jackhammer slash island? I'm sorry, I'm just rubbing it in now, it's just terrible. You know my question, go ahead.
Yeah, I share an aversion to medians, based on past experience, so I agree. You know, one, one option would be to, rather than with a face curve, is to use a rolled curb. Certainly, emergency vehicles can get over on that. The right turn into Espinade, I mean, that's a pretty big wide turn as it is now, I don't think that'll be affected. I think it's the best way to, to, you know, address the pedestrian crossings here. I mean, even on Capitol Road, where we're infamous now, the medians there that we settled on are doing exactly what they want. They provide a protected area for people to cross.
Agreed. Do you think the rolled curbs, and I'm thinking primarily with emergency vehicles, the fire department feels good about that narrow chute that they're gonna run, because the, the engine runs across Stockton Bridge four times a day, easily. It's ample space?
Yeah, I mean, it, it meets their requirements, and from, from lane width, if there's cars stopped in there, you know, and they're trying to get around, certainly that could be, provide some, some issue, but, you know, similar to other traffic calming projects, it is a balance between emergency access and pedestrian safety.
And last question, do the rolled curbs provide less safety for the pedestrian?
Well, they'll still be, you know, I don't think a normal vehicle is comfortable driving up even on a rolled curb. I mean, I don't think it's something people are gonna be riding up on and going, so yeah, I think they still would provide protection.
I wasn't thinking about intentional riding up on the rolled curb, I was thinking of wild rides out of the village, you know?
Yes, and they would probably go up on a regular curb too, then.
Well, okay, there's that.
How wild they are, I guess, but I, I think the degree of protection maybe is slightly less, but I still think it's, it's significant.
And I would really want to go along with the delay, I certainly understand that, but not if it has to come back to us again. You know, we keep on deciding on this, and it'd be nice to not see this again if we delayed till this, till the fall, but that's just me.
Yeah.
Question, Steve, is the footprint of the bulbout in the same place where the poles that are in the street now, is it?
It, it changes ever so slightly. I don't think, the curvature of this isn't exactly what's out there, but we've curved it out so that it lines up better with the wider sidewalk here, but ninety-eight percent of it is as it is today.
That was my impression, and, and, you know, with regard to the questions brought up, I was concerned, I read the same letter about fire apparatus, I actually went over to the fire station and talked to them, and they indicated that they have no problem making that turn with the existing engine, and I questioned about the truck, which was, actually has a longer base, and indicated that that vehicle also has no problem making that turn. So, as long as we don't, you know, as long as it's the same, or we're close to that, they said they absolutely have no problem making that, that turn, so that was just-
Yeah, I think that the turn, the radius of this turn hasn't changed at all.
I say, I can only look at the, the poles that are out, the plastic poles in the street and assume that we were gonna-
There's a slight change just in the curvature along Stockton Avenue.
Right. Okay.
Okay, I'm, I was gonna ask about the median, Steve, I mean, is, is that distance on that crosswalk, I mean, is it really long enough to warrant a median? I mean, it's not like Capitol Road, I mean, that, that was a huge distance, and I think it made a lot of sense up there, but this seems to be, you know, much narrower. Does it encourage more pedestrians kind of being stuck in the middle when otherwise they would just go all the way across?
I think it, it does two things. A, it provides some protection if, if the car's not looking and continuing, and the problem we have now is, you know, the car, there's no stop controls or any other controls in this intersection, so cars are rolling through, they're not looking for pedestrians. If you're on the one corner and there's a car on the other lane farthest from you, and they don't see you, you're kind of sticking your head out there, and it just, just shortens the crossing. I don't see people really getting stuck in the middle, I think, you know, they're still gonna be visible, it's not, they're not hiding them or anything, it's just giving them protection. And it also, by narrowing the road, I think it, it forces cars to slow down, you know, they're, that's one of the prime traffic calming measures.
The benefit, right.
You narrow roads, people have to drive slower, because you can't drive, you know, comfortably through a narrow slot, so I think it provides those two benefits. Certainly, you know, this isn't why it's Capitol Road, I'm not denying that, but I, I think the benefits of it and the amount of traffic we get here, certainly the inner intersections, you can see up at Stockton and Capitol Avenue, we did bulbouts to shorten the intersection, and that has worked very effectively. I think that's the whole key is to shorten the crossing. Fortunately, I don't think a bulbout on this section would be as viable in this location to do two bulbouts here. It works here, I mean, we're using a bulbout here to shorten this.
Right, okay.
But I, you know, I'd be happy to look at it, but I think the median is a good solution here.
Yeah, go ahead, Mike.
Steve, you are gonna remove the ADA ramp that goes from Peter's, the-
Yeah, the, the, there will be, there's a ramp where this old crosswalk is, there's a ramp here.
Yeah, but I'm talking about the-
That'll get removed, this will get removed.
Little further up there, where you see-
This one will get removed.
That will get removed, okay.
And this one will not be built.
Got it.
We left these in now, we're still going through the concepts here in case there was interest in maintaining this crosswalk, we kind of, here's a way we could do it, but those would not be built.
On the delay, would we lose Peter Dwares, you know, involvement? Are, are they eager to proceed with this in any event, so?
My contacts with them, they were, they wanted to move. Would we lose them? I don't think so, they didn't suggest as much, but, you know, the property manager just said, yep, I looked at it, looks like it needs to be done, let's get it done.
Do we have a plan line done for that area, Steve?
Yeah, Ramona Williams is, is working right now on, on finalizing all that, that sidewalk design, so I'd hope by middle of next week, we have plans to him so that he can be looking at it and-
Are we, are we being told that we have to have a coastal permit for changing your sidewalks?
Um, that, that is effectively the Coastal Commission's position on this, and we have enough sticks, brands in the fire, if you will, with them, that, you know, putting our-
What do we change it? We, we're allowed to do a number of things within, within the coastal program that doesn't require going to them, including remodels under a certain size. In this case, we're not changing the width of the sidewalk or the size of the sidewalk, we're adding ADA ramps, and we're, and we're just replacing the sidewalk.
I'll tell you, the, the, the spot where I think, if, because we debated whether or not we just push back on this, but recall that we're talking about widening the sidewalk on Stockton there, eighteen inches, and one parking space is going away. So, I think, under an incredibly strict definition and read, I think that that, we might lose on that point.
Regarding letting, regarding letting Peter Dwares go forward, don't we have, we have an ADA liability there, because he'll be taking away a ramp that, that leads to an existing crosswalk that will remain in place. I think it would be ill-advised to let that happen without the whole thing happening.
Yeah, that's a good point.
You follow me, Steve?
Yeah, we would probably need to build that ramp.
And then we need to take it out.
Then we would take it out later, but-
And take it out, yeah.
Yeah.
You know, we don't want to mess with ADA.
For catching that nuance.
Let's just tell, let's just tell Peter, we can't do it till we do the whole project, and he just has to live with that, and that's what it is.
Do keep in mind that under one model, it could be two contractors, you know, one, their contractor, our contractor, so it isn't necessarily, you know, they may not necessarily button up perfectly regardless-
He's asking for fifty percent split with the city.
Can we get Peter's money now and then build it at the end of the summer?
Good luck with that one.
Yeah, I know, that's-
What if, what if we just gave you the flexibility in terms of the timing, and in working with the, you know, the, the property owners and, and, you know, the schedule, the summer months, and as long as, you know, if we said we'd like to see it done by fall sometime, but you guys handle it all.
Like I said, the intersection improvements, you know, I agree, it's not ideal to do them in the side of the sidewalk, and it's just the effect on the businesses in the village to tear out the sidewalk in the summer is, is, is not possible, so that's why I think Mr. Dwares and their representative are saying, you know, they would want to get it done in the month of May.
Right, sooner than, right, yeah.
Yeah, or, or wait, and the other par, property owners that I've talked to, I said it, nothing would happen till fall, so, as far as other sidewalk improvements, so I think, you know, flexibility's great, we can try and do, I, I-
Yeah, well, I mean, that's what I would, instead of just saying definitively, let's just put it off and not do anything until the fall without having, you know, maybe all the information at hand, give the staff the flexibility to work with all the parties, recognizing, you know, the complications, and, and trying to put it together, and I think our interest though is, you know, make it as soon as, as possible within the, the reason of, you know, the, the activity that takes place there and the interest of the private parties. So, that's what I, I would suggest.
I'd be very much in favor of leaving it at staff's discretion as far as timing, what money we can get, what money we can't. Staff is painfully aware of the pressures on our village during the summer.
Right.
And I don't think Public Works wants to manage a project in the middle of the height of the season any more than we do.
It is the busiest pedestrian intersection in the whole city, it's right there. So, we would be okay if you put it off till fall, though.
Okay.
We have lighting, though, need lighting.
Yeah, speaking of, speaking of lighting, I just, yes, some of the lights on the bridges are out, and so I think that that would be something that maybe we could do right away to increase visibility there.
Stay out there next week, huh?
And since we have some potential savings from this crosswalk or this project, I was, I wanted to maybe just spark some interest about the crosswalk further up East Cliff, coming across those parking places. I mean, it's kind of just a painted crosswalk at this time.
Are you talking up Cliff Drive?
Cliff Drive, East Cliff Drive.
Okay.
Yeah, Cliff Drive. So, I, I, I mean, I would ask the staff to maybe look at that and seeing if we can maybe incorporate some safety features, some better visibility, maybe even some lit crosswalks up there, because at night, you know, there's no other lighting, it's pretty dark, and people are crossing there.
Sketchy during the day, too, with beachgoers.
Yeah, people, yeah, there's a lot of people that are going from those parking lots and residents that are walking across.
That is, it's one of the unfunded projects in our capital implement program, but we could certainly kind of see if there's some less expensive steps, I think, the, the recommendation of the traffic, what was that, the Neighborhood Traffic Advisory Committee in its day was to try and build some bulbouts there to make that crossing shorter, but maybe there's other elements and better signs we can put in there, so I'd be happy to look at that.
Thank you, thank you, Steve. So, with that, if there are no other question, yes, Mike?
No, I thought you were gonna open up the-
Okay, yeah.
I'll wait till after.
Okay, I'll, I'll just, is there any member of the public that would like to address the council on this item? Seeing none, I'm gonna bring it back for council action.
I'll move, I'll move for approval as recommended by staff, giving them a leeway on the timeline and bringing other property owners into the fray, and that we, if, if the project's put off until fall, that we, before summertime, that we add lighting along that crossway on both sides of the street to whatever's feasible there.
I will second that-
And both sides of the bridge, too?
Yeah. I will second that, and I have a question of the chief, and would you leave that map up there? I'd like to satisfy my curiosity and questions I've been asked countless times. Many people receive tickets for driving through a crosswalk while pedestrians are present. If a pedestrian is on the other side of a pedestrian safety island, can the traffic legally move across the crosswalk on the other side of the pedestrian island? Not, this is not a pop quiz, but-
The way I understand, in my recollection of the traffic laws, is the vehicle actually has the right of way until they yield that to the pedestrian, in other words, until they stop. It's not as though you can just step off a cross, a sidewalk into the crosswalk as traffic is moving. And that's always been a bone of contention with pedestrians, in that you have a free chance just to walk across, because you're in a crosswalk. You actually have to wait until the vehicle yields to you, because the roads are actually designed for vehicle traffic.
Really?
Yes.
I thought it was just-
The opposite.
I thought it was just the opposite, that, that cars needed to yield to the pedestrians.
Once the vehicle yields to the pedestrian who enters it, then they have the right of way.
So, they can't stop to wait until they get a good shot, in other words? Okay, got it, okay.
It is very confusing, but yeah, it's, and it happens a lot where people get rear-ended because somebody stops and to avoid hitting a pedestrian who just leaves the crosswalk before the vehicle yields to them.
Rudy, I'd hate it, I'd hate to go back to, to, people driving cars and tell them they have a right of way in a crosswalk.
Now, unless the, unless the law has changed over-
You strike that in the record. Johnny, please don't put that in the paper tomorrow.
Unless the law has changed over the couple of years, that's always been my recollection is that.
Can we get a sign made that says that? We need, we need Ramona to weigh in on that, because she's our, our street smart person.
I do offer another answer to the question, is my understanding is, this is considered one crossing from one side of the street all the way through the other street, so once they've yielded, even if they're on the other side of the pedestrian safety zone, they must continue to yield until technically they're all the way across the street. So, the answer, the, the island does not, you know, provide the vehicle right to, to go through.
You mean, I can't hit cars with a cane?
Yeah.
No, I've bumped them with a wheelchair once or twice.
So, with that, I'm going to call the-
Just one comment?
Make it quickly.
I have a clarification I'd like to make.
I, I just want to reiterate that it's to support everybody else, that I think it's better that we delay this project and do it right, seems like there's too many complications that are involved with, with sidewalks and access, and I'm glad that we're supporting the cooperative program. I think that sends a good message to all the other business owners, and I think we possibly might even, Dennis, you mentioned, you know, I'll personally, I'm gonna go talk to David Ling, see if we can incorporate that portion also. And to do it all in the fall would be, you know, we have so many, so much going on, but I think it would be, this is a great project, and if it's done and coordinated, and we go through the Coastal Commission, I think it's a great idea, so I do support this part.
Right, thank you, Ed.
So, I think Councilman Bottor have actually answered in here, but I just want to make sure we, our council direction is to establish a cooperative fund, and we'll figure out funding later, but for right now, we'll, we'll create that fund and seek cooperative replacement projects in the village.
And, Ed, thank Ed for bringing up the idea of extending that sidewalk to be even with the rest of it by, from one time on. That's, it's gonna make a world of difference.
Yeah, I think, I mean, the wider sidewalk in front of the restaurants now is, is so noticeable, and I think we'll have the same feel there, too.
Okay, one thing we have to consider, if anybody's been down there, is the color of the sidewalks we're doing before we do this next phase, because we do have a problem in front of the restaurants already.
The new color's blue, so we won't have a problem.
Blue, yeah, dark brown would probably be more-
And, and along those lines, we, we'll be talking to the businesses and trying to-
It's more of an art than a science, that concrete coloring thing.
Okay, with that, I'm gonna call the question, all in favor of the motion?
Aye.
The motion passes unanimously, well, which brings us to the, the brick program. This is to consider implementing a village personalized brick program.
Yay.
Lisa?
Yes. Thank you, council. What I have before you is a request to bring back the personalized brick program, which as you can recall, we did that back in two thousand and two, and we sold seventeen hundred bricks and made sixty thousand dollars for the city for the sidewalk program. And over the years, we've had a lot of requests for it, to bring this program back, and since we are doing the new sidewalks there down on the Espinade, so this is perfectly timely, to ask if we can bring back this program, what we, it was, it's a big program, it's a big deal to try to- It's a big deal to try to implement and to administer. And so what we are recommending to staff is to authorize the Capitola SoCal Chamber of Commerce to administer this program on behalf of the city, and in exchange, they will collect fifty percent of the proceeds of the program. We are working to identify somebody who will do the engraving of the bricks. It's not easy. The company that did it before is no longer available. And the question is going to be whether we are able to do the bricks in place, or whether we'll have new bricks, they will be engraved offsite, and then once we have a band sold, then we'll have them placed in the particular location. So I don't have a price yet for you. I don't have a lot of specific details because we're working with a couple of vendors to get the price under control because it can be quite costly. So the recommendation is to go ahead and move forward with this program, and we will flesh out the details and share the proceeds with the Chamber of Commerce, and the proceeds from the city would go into a sidewalk replacement fund. That's it.
Are there any questions? Yes, Dennis?
Just to give you a little institutional history in this thing, I was involved with the first one. And why we did this, to this day, I don't know, but what we did is, the chamber actually did all the work, raised the money, and gave all the money to the city.
No, we split it.
No.
No, we split it last time, I think.
No. All of it went to the city. All, every penny went to the city.
How did Tony let us get away with that? Times have changed.
So in thought, in thought, that all of the sixty thousand went to the city last time with this thing. Once you, if you do this program and the chamber is really becomes, it's a logistical nightmare because you have to lay out people's individual bricks where they are, you know, meaning that some people like to be in front of the ice cream store, some people want to be over in front of Paradise Beach Grill, and so that part there is a, not taking any more staff time on this thing, not taking any more public money on this thing. All the work has to be done through the budget of this. I would not be afraid of giving all the money to the chamber. They didn't take any out of the last time. They're going to administer this, and the chamber puts money back into our community, back in the form of support of local businesses. So I'm not afraid to give them all the money that's made from this.
I'm not afraid of that either, and my big question is, I know what the intent was last time, but this fabled village sidewalk fund that never really existed and never really saw any money, even though we took it all in, it sort of disintegrated into the general fund. And we, there were even suggestions to have it be used for cleaning sidewalks, and that never happened. So, you know, rather than see it just dump into the general fund, I'd have no problem with giving it to the chamber and have some good done with it. I'd support you in that.
Okay. Just to get a clarification about the proposal, it's to give the profits, a hundred percent of the profits to the chamber.
Right.
And then, well, they would cover the cost of the engraving.
Any expenses that go against the project.
Right, any of the profits.
Well, we'd hope to recoup that, that the cost of the brick, you know, when people purchase it, it's going to be not only the cost to do the program, to implement it, but it would be the profit as well.
And for clarity's sake, I think, I think our thinking was that it would go into this sidewalk matching fund that we just set up here, the previous item. It wasn't some elusive sidewalk fund, it was that these would become matching dollars.
I was talking about the first time we did it.
Right, right, right.
It went into the magical fund.
It went into a magical fund, it wasn't available, yeah. This time, we were thinking of a much more concrete use for it.
Okay.
Pun intended.
Oh. Is there any member of the public that would like to address the council on this? You happy with the idea of coming?
She stayed here till nine thirty.
Nine thirty.
Tony has to come and talk to us.
Tony Castro, Capitola SoCal Chamber. When we first did this project twelve or thirteen years ago, Peter Hubbuck was the chairperson for the chamber and insisted that we give all of the funding back to the city at that time. And it was a very labor-intensive project, and that money was intended not to go back into the general fund, but into a special fund to help fund Phase Two or Three. And this was, you know, thirteen years ago, so I don't know what happened to that money, but it did go into the general fund, I believe. But we're still getting calls, as Lisa said, at the chamber office, too, all the time. People wanting engraved bricks, so it is a really good fundraiser. And I appreciate, you know, you recommending that the chamber get a hundred percent, but why I'm saying this, but I think the city should get a cut in it, too, because it needs to help pay for the project.
No, 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 no. Don't be silly.
No.
Don't be silly.
It does.
Thank you. How about, how about you just clean the sidewalks after the Art and Wine Festival?
Okay.
Deal. Okay, there we go.
Tony, just to be clear, when you say pay for the project, you mean?
Well, the project is self-supporting. When you sell the brick.
Right.
You know, that pays for the engraving of the brick.
Uh huh.
And then, you know, we put it in the sidewalk.
And there's some cost to installing.
There's some costs in doing that, yeah.
Right.
But it's a self-supporting project. There's money made, to be made on that project.
Right.
But you're paying for the expenses along the way. So there's no funding coming out of the city's pocket, you know, to do this project.
Correct.
But the intent last time was for it to go into the next phase, and it just went into the general fund and, I don't know, disappeared. So.
Well, in order to avoid that happening, you should keep the profits from there.
We'll set up a separate, we could set up a separate fund.
You could set up a separate fund.
Sure.
You could keep this project ongoing perpetually.
Mm-hmm. You know, we could use, we could use engraved bricks for the skateboard park, the dog park.
Yes.
You know, all of that.
Yes.
You put bricks all over the city.
Those bricks everywhere.
Help pay for those projects.
Yeah, okay. Well, thank you for your general offer, but I have a sense it may be rejected. So, thank you.
Okay.
So anything, anyone else that would like to address the council on this item? So I'm going to bring it back for council action.
I have some comments. I am a big fan of the Chamber of Commerce, and Tony, I want to thank you for coming up and your comments, because I see this as a partnership. I have no problem with you taking, when the expenses come off, I would like to see the, like, the proposal was made to share the profit, and the stipulation I have on that is that, you know, you definitely need to be compensated, and you do have alternatives for the money, but I would like to see that our share, as the city manager indicated, goes into a dedicated cleaning fund, because that's where I think the big problem is with the, with the village, is we've got all this massive new sidewalk going in, and we have no plans to increase the cleaning. We do the three or four a year, and that's not sufficient. And part of the complaint that came out of the general plan was, you know, improve the sidewalks, and then we have to take and maintain them. So I want to thank you, Tony, for really being sincere on that. I know that the fact that the individual, Peter Hubbuck turned all the money over, that probably was a little overzealous. I think that you should have been compensated, and I think that the recommendation here is that you run the program, you take, pay for the expenses, you keep half, the city keeps half, and that half goes into the cleaning fund. Because I don't necessarily want to put it into the sidewalk fund, but we are doing a lot of money. We've got extensive deals that we've already done and we're going to do with the severe cost for sidewalk replacement. So I think there's a reasonable point here, and I think, Tony, you hit it. You said exactly what it is. I think, pay the expenses, put it in half, and put the money in a dedicated cleaning fund. That's what I would feel fiscally responsible doing.
Thank you, Ed. Any other comments? Is there a motion?
I'll move that we approve staff's recommendation with this, with a hundred percent of the proceeds going to the Chamber of Commerce for this time only, making up for the previous year's commitments.
I'll second that.
Just for clarification, if it's a hundred percent of the proceeds, but out of that proceeds, the expense of implementing the project would be, so.
I'm saying the profit.
Profit only.
Okay, a hundred percent, a hundred percent of the profits from the program would go to the chamber.
And it takes no more labor time from the city to implement this.
Okay. Any further discussion on that motion? Just speaking to, Ed made an excellent point about, I think, our need and responsibility to keep the sidewalks clean. I think that that is the city's responsibility in working in tandem with the private owners, the businesses in front of those sidewalks. I don't think we should be dependent upon this fundraising effort to carry out or to dictate our level of diligence on that effort. So to me, that should be a separate, independent, diligent effort to keep our city clean and not have it be tied to this particular fundraising project. And so I support your concept, Ed. I just think we need to be looking at a different way to carrying out that responsibility. So with that, all in favor of the motion?
Aye.
And all opposed?
No.
So we have, and I'll vote aye, so the motion passes three to one, and note that Councilman Bortoff voted no. And thank you, and which will bring us to the last item this evening, which is to consider a contract with Community Television of Santa Cruz County to provide programming for the city's public education government channels and authorize the city manager to execute the contract. And is there a staff report?
Yes, I'll keep it brief. Community Television's been operating our PEG channels and broadcasting our council meeting and our planning commission and our special meetings live since 2005. With the cable franchising changing with the, with Divka, the state ordinance, and new federal law, typically the way the contracts funded was through the PEG fee, we charge all of our cable subscribers, which is sixty-four cents per subscriber. And all of that fund, all those funds, according to our old contract, would then just move right over to pay for all the operational personnel and capital equipment costs that needed to fund the channels. Well, again, because of the change in the law, you can no longer do that, and so therefore we needed to revamp our contract, and in addition, our contract was expired. And so because PEG funding can, you cannot use it for the operational costs, you can only use it for capital equipment purchases. We need to have a new contract based that way, and the funding needs to now come from our general fund and not necessarily, not from the PEG fund. And so the contract now is on an hourly basis. It's fifty dollars an hour, which is a reasonable rate. We were not, I took a look around, particularly in the fact, in light of what we get for that, and we get technical services as well. We have very capable staff from the community television who know our system, have been operating our system, and have been trained. In addition, we'll have some, provide training workshops to our residents on creating their own television shows and their own, use the studios for community television. And they'll create two public service announcements covering any community event we may want as well, which is exciting. We didn't have that before. And last but not least, the, if we get ten hours of technical support at no charge, and after that, it's a thirty dollar per hour charge, and staff is recommending that you execute this contract. That's it.
Thank you. Other questions? I just wanted to note in the packet, there's a letter from Charter, you know, I guess, pointing out to us that the federal law only allows the PEG funds to be used for capital improvements and not for general operating. And since the general operating funds are what community television principally relies upon to be able to carry out its function, my view is that really hampers their abilities. And it also requires that the city, in order to provide, you know, community access to our meetings, that we will now have to pay out of our general fund for this. We're collecting, what, from seventeen thousand to nineteen thousand per year in PEG funds? What, if we're only, and this contract is for about eight or ten thousand, and we can't pass on the PEG funds to the community television any longer, what becomes of the difference?
We'll utilize that for capital equipment purchases, so utilizing, you know, new microphones or new television cameras, new lighting. We can use it for any capital equipment purchases that will help enable and improve access to those channels, but just not on the operational personnel cost. So right now, we.
So for the city's capital improvements, expenses?
Capital improvements associated with broadcasting council meetings.
Yes, Mike. Could we not pass on these funds to community television for improvement in their infrastructure in providing us with public access?
Improvement in their infrastructure, if we wanted to give them the funding, if we had a contract with them? I think if we want to utilize those funds.
No, I want to still pay them the contract to do the services, but I want to take the PEG funds, and if they're capital improvements, I'm sure community television could use capital improvements to help facilitate the public access to our meetings.
You know, I think I'd have to ask the city attorney of that, because I think it has to be specifically related to this city, Capitola, the funds need to stay here, and to aggregate the funds, you know, to pull them over there with the, with the general population, I guess, because community television services quite a few different agencies. I'm not sure what the legality of that.
Well, if all, if we get together with the other cities and all of us, you know, contribute some of our PEG funds, I think that community television would benefit, the cities would benefit, and Charter and Comcast can benefit.
Yeah, I was certainly looking to see what other funds or how we can use our funds capital equipment-wise to assist with our access.
I think it would certainly be worthwhile to explore that, have the city attorney look at those possibilities and to see what we can do. I would also like to explore, what percentage are we charging Charter for these PEG funds?
What percentage? Well, it's sixty-four cents per subscriber. It's a pass-through, so we don't charge Charter necessarily for it. It's a part of the rate that's charged to the customer in addition to the franchise fee.
Charger collects it from the customer and passes it on to us. And I was just wondering, what percentage is that of the typical, you know, charger bill? And does Charter have the ability to pass this on to the subscriber?
To pass on the?
The PEG.
Are you suggesting that we change the PEG rate?
Well, that's what I'm ultimately getting to.
We actually have it in our ordinance. It's set at sixty-four cents per subscriber, and the Divka law forced us to set that amount. We couldn't raise it. We're limited in what we can do in raising it. You certainly can drop it, but you can't raise it.
I thought the maximum was five percent.
That's our franchise fee. It's different, it's too different.
And the PEG fee doesn't also correlate to that, or a percentage?
No, there's two separate, so the five percent for the franchise fee of the total revenue collected less the PEG fee. And the PEG fee is a separate charge, which we set in our municipal code because of the Divka law that came through, which only, it set a maximum amount of what we could set it at, what was our existing rate, so that was all that we could set it at.
Okay, so we're currently at the maximum that we can.
allowable by the state law.
That we can charge. Okay, well, I think we should certainly look at the possibility and feasibility of whether or not these PEG fees can be, you know, passed on to community television for their infrastructure. I didn't read that in the letter from Charter concerning their prohibitions, and so I think that that would be worthwhile to also look at. I'm going to ask if there's any member of the public that would like to address the council on this item.
Good evening, Mayor, council, staff. I'm Nick Brandt, technology director for Community Television, Santa Cruz County, and I appreciate the opportunity to come and speak to you about this contract. We're excited to continue our work with you to provide the meetings and to operate the meetings, and I appreciate the discussion that's gone on here this evening. You may have heard about us in the news a little bit. We're redesigning ourselves right now, literally going through a renaissance, if you, so to speak, because of the Divka ordinance, which only allows us to spend money on capital and not on, and not on operating, which is the reason for these contracts. And so we've had to redesign, a new management plan, new business model, and new technology infrastructure in order to keep our doors open. This contract is a direct correlation of that, and that is, we've been able to simplify our contracts, tell you exactly how much it costs for us to operate the meeting, and then, and then, and then write that into an hourly rate for you so that, so that you can, can pay for exactly what you're, you're getting, and a little bit more. As she said, there, there are some, some increased services there in this contract that weren't there before that we're excited to offer. So I just wanted to offer my support and thanks for you considering this contract, and then to answer any questions for you. And just, just so you know, as a part of our rebirth, we are relaunching the entire station here on April fifteenth from five to seven PM, and you're all invited. We've redesigned our entire technological. We've redesigned our entire technological infrastructure. We're now in a high-definition studio, and we'd love to have you all come out and check it out, five to seven, April fifteenth. And I can answer any questions you might have or any questions of Councilmember Tremena. I really appreciate the, the offer of forwarding those, those funds to, to us for our capital improvements because that's kind of how public access works. You know, all the jurisdictions get together, you know, provide these workshops through, through as, as much relevant technology as we can provide. So, so I really appreciate that.
Nick, how much has Divka impacted your budget over the past few years?
So it's mostly impacting us right now because we had a seven hundred and seventy thousand dollar budget, and it's been cut to three hundred and forty thousand dollars in this past year. Okay, so we've had to do all of our, all of our personnel restructuring. And basically, what we have now is a system where we have a lot of really great technology and no one to operate it. And so, and so that's, that's really what you're, what you're looking at here. And that's why we're streamlining our contracts so that, so that our personnel costs are exactly what it takes to operate that equipment.
Yeah, okay. Thank you, Nick, for coming and speaking to us this evening. Is there anyone else that would like to address the council on this item? Seeing none, I'm going to close the microphone. Just on the staff report, Lisa, in the first paragraph, it refers to the amount collected. It says, which amounts to seventeen thousand to nineteen thousand per year. The last sentence then reads, this entire amount would then be passed on to C.T.V.
That's the old contract.
That was under, the old contract?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. So we are, in effect, reducing our support for community television almost fifty percent. So, and I just wanted to express to everyone, you know, since Divka has come into play, which has really been promoted by the cable companies, there have been over a hundred community television stations throughout the nation that have shut down. And our community television, as you've just heard from Nick and how their budget has been slashed, is in jeopardy of having that same thing happen. And this, I mean, to me, this letter from Charter Communication is just, you know, another example of how they are trying to force out community television and really what is community access to, to us. And so, you know, I hope everybody would speak to the legislatures about these impacts. I think that we should try to resist them as much as we possibly can to make sure that we don't have the same result here of our community television closing down. So I just wanted to make that point before we move on with our deliberation. Yes, Dennis?
I would bet, and I know there's no way to judge us right now, that we probably have one-tenth of the audience watching this program now that we had ten years ago. And the reason is, is that the number of Charter contracts that are out there are so limited. So if you're doing anything that's cable, or I mean, excuse me, satellite bound, we're not getting this, this thing. Where it seems to me, the value to us today is in, in, in history, recording history. In other words, they're recording in the archives of our meetings, which you can go online to get. Now, correct me if I'm wrong, I think, Mike, can't you go on a computer right now and watch this program? So if you, if you didn't have that technology, probably our, our, our watching audience is pretty limited to what it was then. Because at that time, Charter was the only service we had in town, and everybody watched it. You always talk to people in town that watch the programs. I very seldom talk to people now that, that watch the council meetings. I think it has a lot to do with that.
Well, partially, but also the fact that this program is rebroadcast by community television on Comcast stations is very, very relevant to this discussion. On Comcast? On Comcast. And it's important to us. And, you know, I can't begin to tell you, I work with a lot of, in part of my day-to-day life, a lot of broadcast professionals. And we've had the pleasure in the last year of working with Nick. And I would put him up against anyone in the network that I've worked with. And the fact that we have him in community television, you know, the technical expertise and the cooperation of our community television is beyond anything that I've experienced anywhere else in any other city. So I would move the staff recommendation. I'll second that.
And, but to add, I would like the staff to evaluate whether or not we can somehow, I mean, get back up to the levels of funding that we have had in the past and whether that's to build in infrastructure support for community television.
And that is part of my motion, you know, looking into that. And my second.
Okay, great. Any other comments? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye. Aye.
The motion passes unanimously. Thank you, everyone. Thank you, Nick, for coming and speaking to us this evening. So with that, we're going to, brings us to the end of the meeting. I'll ask if there's any final announcements this evening.
I have a, I have a little final comment I'd like to make.
Yes, go ahead, Ed.
Just want to make an announcement that tomorrow, the Santa Cruz Sentinel is going to be publishing a story. I'm not going to go into the details of that story, but the nature of the story is that I was arrested in January of last year. There was a lengthy investigation that went on, and ultimately, the charges were dismissed. I want to make it clear that at no time did I use this job or any of my influence to, my, my job here to have any impact on that decision. And that's all. Thank you.
All right, thank you. And hearing that, I'd like to ask the city attorney if they will, if he will do an investigation and provide a written report to the council on whether we have any legal responsibilities in response to what we've just heard.
Okay, I'll be happy to do that.
Thank you. With there being nothing else, I will adjourn this meeting to the next regular meeting of the council to be held on Thursday, April twenty-fourth, 2014, at seven P.M. in the City Hall chambers. Good night. Thank you, everyone, for your participation and good work.